Good morning, City Council. This is your friendly reminder to please log in before council begins so we can have a seamless roll call. Please log in so we can do our quorum roll call. We will begin the council shortly. If you forgot your login information or need help, please raise your hand. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the City Council, can you please log in so we can get a quorum count and start the meeting? The council will come to order. Please use the e-vote application to record your presence at this time.
We are open. Please log in. Please submit present for the quorum. All right, I will now call if you don't have your vote in. Alderman Hopkins not present. Alderman King. Alderman King is present. Alderman Hairston not present. Alderman Sawyer not present. Alderman Mitchell not present. Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris is present. Alderman Beal not present. Alderman Slawski-Garza not present. Alderman Burke not present. Alderman Coleman not present. Alderman Curtis not present. Alderman O'Shea not present. Alderman Taylor not present. Alderman Brookins not present. Alderman Maldonado not present. Oh, Alderman Maldonado, I have you. I was on a roll. Alderman Mitchell is present. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Osterman. All right, that will be. And we are closing the vote.
All right, there are 35 members present. We have a quorum. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on its nation under God, infinite and just as for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Bishop James C. Austin, Sr. of St. Luke Church of God in Christ. Pastor, the floor is yours.
God bless you. Mayor Lightfoot, the aldermen and members of this great council, I invite you to join me in the throne room of God where we can obtain mercy and find grace to help in time of need. Let us pray. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. We come to you, dear Lord, because you are the only one with power and riches and wisdom and strength and honor and glory and blessings, which we so desperately need. Moreover, it is you who have made us and not we ourselves. We are your people, the sheep of your pasture. So we enter into your gates with thanksgiving, enter your courts with praise. We thank you and bless your name because you are so good. Your mercy is everlasting and your truth endures to all generations. And Lord, we said, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. In chapter 29 of Book Jeremiah, you instructed us to seek the peace of the city and to pray for it. For in the peace thereof shall we have peace. So here we are, Lord, seeking the peace of this city. The problems we face are so great, so diverse and complex. We know not what to do because the cause of the distress stems from the heart. It's a heart issue. In the 15th chapter of St. Matthew, you said, "Out of the heart proceed evil thoughts, murders, adulteries, fornications, thefts, false witness, and blasphemies, and these are the things that defile a man." The 14th chapter of Proverbs says, "Righteousness exalts the nation, but sin is a reproach to any people." For this cause you sent your son Jesus from heaven to earth to give his life and to shed his precious blood so that we could be forgiven and our sins could be washed away and our souls saved. Thank you, dear God, for loving us so much that you raised him from the grave and now he's seated at your right hand making intercession for us. So I pray that you give us a clean heart, oh Lord, and renew within us a right spirit. Let this council adopt the Christ agenda, which addresses the needs of the poor, the brokenhearted, the captive, the blind and the bruised. I commend to you all the members of this council, for these are social healers. And the healers need healing. The providers need provision. The protectors need protection. The peacemakers need peace. And these who show mercy need your mercy. So I ask that you send your Holy Spirit and sweep through this assembly. Refresh, renew, and fill every person here with your Holy Spirit. Transform them by the renewing of their minds and make these social healers whole. I ask this in the matchless name of Jesus, the matchless name of Jesus, the King of Kings and the Lord of Lords, the Alpha and the Omega, the beginning and the end, the first and the last, our King Eternal, Immortal, Invisible, the only wise God, our Savior, and the only eternal potentate. Amen? Amen? And? Amen.
Sorry. Gentlemen. Public comment. Mr. Clark.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. The first speaker today is Kenny Doss II.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. We, One Inglewood United, an indigenous organization that's fighting to liberate the Inglewood community. We are building a power base with the intentions to bring good jobs, quality food zones, safe streets, quality education, and world-class health systems. One Inglewood United demands equality and inclusion. We are here today to send a concise message. There will be no more business as usual. Reclaim Inglewood.
Thank you, Mr. Doss, for your comments. Our next speaker is Mr. George Blake Moore.
Good afternoon, Mr. Blake. This is this morning. What's wrong? You getting a little old and senile? But anyway, I am speaking to the people. People's power. Inglewood have turned Hispanic. Black people have been socially engineered out of the city of Chicago. Over a million and a half have left. Under Miss Lightfoot, no. Under Dave and Ennang. Not Lady Lightfoot. Well, are you up here to campaign for Lady Lightfoot? Perhaps I am. Why not? All everything that has happened is happening to our so-called global city today. And then happened, she didn't bring it here. Nepotism, racism, corruption. She didn't bring it here. I'm speaking to my black people. Sanctuary. She didn't bring it here. We have dropped the ball. The black population, the black people, the so-called black leadership. Why did a million and a half black leave the city of Chicago? Hispanics are moving in. Legal or illegal? The new Americas, Asians, whites. Why have blacks been gentrified out ethnic Clinton? And he's talking about Inglewood. Inglewood will be a Hispanic community. Lundell, the exit of black people. You know, they had the preacher preaching. Now let me do a little preaching. In Egypt, the Pharaoh, the people had to leave. And we're leaving because we have no job, good contracts and service. All of that that coming with the casino, I believe in a set aside for black people. 20% of the jobs. 20% of the professional jobs. Why are you, Mr. Blake Moore, saying that blacks are entitled to 20% of these jobs? Because we are the only people that was enslaved in America and we never got our reparations. And we still on the new plantation. So all of y'all that's speaking against Miss Lightfoot, look in the mirror. You are part of the problem. You're not part of the solution. Now you say good afternoon. Well, I'm saying good morning.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blake Moore, for your comments. Our next speaker is Sophia Stein.
Hello, my name is Sophie Stein and I'm a resident of the city's first ward. I'm here today with the Bring Chicago Home campaign as a volunteer with the Jewish Council on Urban Affairs. The Bring Chicago Home Resolution, or BCH, has laid dormant in the Rules Committee for more than 16 months. In November, the Bring Chicago Home Coalition and our allied alders called a special city council meeting to host a hearing on this resolution. The subject matter hearing was a necessary step to get our resolution on the ballot. The hearing fell one person short of having a quorum. We are very disappointed by this lack of action on the part of the mayor and the city council to show up to this meeting and even give an opportunity for discussion on the important Bring Chicago Home ordinance. Today, the Bring Chicago Home Coalition and our allied alders are reintroducing the Bring Chicago Home Resolution. We remain committed to fighting for this important measure to provide a dedicated revenue stream to fund housing and wraparound services for the 65,000 Chicagoans currently experiencing homelessness. Housing is a human right. All Chicagoans deserve a place of their own to rest their head each and every night. I recently graduated from Lane Tech after having spent 15 years in Chicago Public Schools. In my time during, as a student of Chicago Public Schools, I saw how my classmates who lived without housing struggled in all aspects of their life. Housing is an important step for anyone to have a life that is peaceful and meaningful for them. There are currently almost 20,000 Chicago Public School students who are homeless. It is not enough for the city council and the mayor to acknowledge this problem. We need their action and so we call on our alders and our mayor to sign on to this ordinance and meet with us on this important issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stein, for your comments. Our next speaker is Melvin Bailey.
Good morning, City Council. Good morning. It's been a while. Good morning, Mayor. Been a while since I spoke to you guys. I want you to do one thing for me. Google KN TV and you'll see how many times I came down here under previous administration asking for opportunity. But I must tell the truth. This mayor and the housing department heard that. This mayor and this housing department heard it because now we are breaking ground to build affordable housing, started an Alderman Irving's Ward and Alderman Walter Burnett's Ward. And I'd like to thank the mayor and please Google and you hear my conversation have not changed since the last administration. Mayor Day's administration, Ron administration, we need to get the guns out of these kids' hands with opportunity and a job. So thank God that the mayor and the housing department, Commissioner Navaria and Will Edwards, and I had them on the phone and they said, Melvin, how can we help? I said, we need some workforce development money so I can hire them guys on Walnut. And I told the guys on Walnut, when we go in the ground, I'm gonna hire y'all. So right now, we got, we got eight individuals employed with the workforce development money from the city of Chicago. And I know we can do more because we got to get these guns out of these kids' hands. Whoever heard of 50 robberies in one day? Who heard of that? That's insane. And they are kids and I know we can reach them with the right opportunity and the right chances. So thank God to this administration to say, Melvin, every time I go to the alderman's office, Jason Irvin, Alderman Metz, every alderman I go to is an open door policy. Pat Dowell, tell him, Melvin, I want to help. What can I do? Derek Curtis, all of them, Ms. Taylor. So we need to put our, wrap our arms around this situation because we got to get the guns out of these kids' hands. It's too many guns running in our community. Somebody bringing them in from somewhere. So, but I know I can reach the kids and I know the brothers that was in here from Inglewood can reach them as well. So what we have to do is make sure that we can, as you can see, I'm so passionate about it because when I talk to the young brothers, they was like, big bro, you can have this gun, get me a job. I don't want to do this, but I have no opportunity. So again, the mayor and the aldermen is reaching down in the bottom of the barrel to make sure that this, this crazy and madness can stop. So that's what we need to do. And then I'm gonna leave you with this, Mayor. One thing we need to look at is the fire department. I'm switching gears because I had some kids fill out the applications for the fire department. They was like, and they was on the list, did all that qualifications and they went down to the bottom of the barrel and they African Americans. So I just want to say thank you, Mayor, and it's a minute to the housing department. Thank you for, open up your ears, just Google KN TV. Just Google and you'll see I haven't changed my language and my tone haven't changed about changing lives.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bailey, for your comments. Our next speaker is Vance White. Mr. White, are you present? Our next speaker is Zach Savella-Stallard.
Mayor Lightfoot and members of the City Council. My name is Zach Savella-Stallard, a resident representing Stop Predatory Gambling Illinois or of a national nonprofit that works to prevent gambling operators from targeting vulnerable victims. I come here today to respectfully ask members of this body to vote no on the Valley's casino proposal. Valleys have shown casinos increase addiction locally and this casino will profit at the expense of our neighbors with increased social costs for the city canceling out any revenue. I realize this process seems to be moving towards an inevitable casino, but you still have a chance today. Chicago has been down this road before. Deals with short-term gain and long-term pain from lack of transparency and choosing the wrong partners. As Alderman Riley said yesterday, this process began with a secret evaluation followed by a council committee which has been bypassed by the mayor who chose Valleys without the real support or consultation of this council. All of this took place in just over a month without adequate traffic studies or public safety plans for both sites. Valley seems to have been chosen with one thing in mind, the $40 million upfront payment that could make this year's budget work before an election. Valleys is a fitting partner for such a short-sighted choice as they themselves have a clear pattern of short-term gain and long-term pain. Their leaseback deal chases cash in exchange for greater long-term financial obligations, is a sign of their poor cash position, and creates a concerning lack of clarity about who actually owns this significant property as no legally required updated economic disclosure form has been published listing those with financial interest in the new property owner. Valleys is a house of cards that puts the city at risk. Their most recent earnings report showed only $600,000 in net earnings in the last quarter and negative earnings over the last four quarters with cash at $164 million and consistently declining. They have over $3 billion in debt commitments, which continue to increase. This has been their pattern with a consent decree and fines in Rhode Island, the casino they point to as proof they can handle this project because of their too high debt ratio and putting payouts to shareholders over keeping up their property, as well as a bankruptcy in 2009 while under Twin River and BLB investors' names, which they blatantly lied about at the last town hall. As they scrambled to explain their earnings call, their cash needed for this project rests upon deals elsewhere that have not yet taken place. The rest comes from a crowdfunding initiative here, which remains without details. Financial analysts have downgraded Valley's outlook to negative and their CEO sold nearly half a million dollars in stock this week. The financial industry and even Valley's own CEO knows they are a bad bet. Is this really a partner on which we want to stake our future? Do we want an operator that can't keep up their property, goes bankrupt again, ends up embroiled in consent decrees and fines for failed promises like they have in Rhode Island, or even fails to complete the project? Please don't make getting a supposed achievement before the upcoming election such a high priority that it blows up in your face, hurts the city, and becomes a weight around your neck for the next election. Chicago didn't forget the parking meters and we won't forget this. Please vote no on the, please vote no on the Valley's proposal. This is your last chance to do the right thing and slow this down to make sure we're being responsible on behalf of all Chicagoans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoller, for your comments. Our next speaker is Justin Williams.
Hello, members of City Council. Far South Side residents have been waiting since 1968 for the Red Line extension, when it was promised by Mayor Richard J. Daley. Chicagoans have since watched the cost of the project balloon to billions rather than millions of dollars. They've also watched expansion of transit access into the Near West Side, the McCormick Place community of the South Loop, along the Brown Line, and the groundbreaking of the red-purple modernization. Now, hopefully, it's time for the residents of the Far South Side to see the Red Line extension come into existence. The Chicagoans, just like every Chicago resident, deserves equitable access to high-quality rapid transit. For that reason, I come to you today representing the Metropolitan Planning Council, Active Transportation Alliance, and the Center for Neighborhood Technology to ask for your yes vote for the Red Line Extension Tax Increment Financing District. Put simply, we support this transit TIF because it will provide rapid transit in an area of the city that has long awaited transportation investment. It will connect people to jobs and amenities throughout the city and reduce travel times to the loop by 30 minutes. It will benefit the city as a whole by giving employers access to an expanded labor market, increasing development potential of underutilized land, increasing tax revenues, and helping the city meet its Climate Action Plan transportation goals. This project also centers racial equity in its financing. Our organizations do not always support TIPS. As a market-based tool, TIPS are too often used in areas where developers already want to invest due to the overly broad definition of blight. TIPS are too infrequently used to finance projects in areas that have little development momentum because of the inability to raise sufficient funds. In the case of the Red Line extension, the wealth generation potential of downtown and the Near South Side is being used to finance investment in historically disinvested areas. This is a good use of TIF. The Red Line extension carries tremendous potential when coupled with other city incentives and programs. The city's new Connected Communities Ordinance passed in 2022, which deepens incentives for development near transit, provides new opportunities to build housing, retail, and walkable, accessible, thriving streetscapes along this corridor. That potential is magnified as the city leverages other programs like Invest Southwest to create vibrant, equitable, transit-oriented development around these new Red Line Extension stations. We thank you for your consideration of this major opportunity for Chicago's South Side. Metropolitan Planning Council, Active Transportation Alliance, and Center for Neighborhood Technology urge your yes vote for the Red Line Extension TIF. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, for your comments. Your Honor, there are no other speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
All right, this ends our public comment period. We now have several resolutions, ladies and gentlemen. Actually, before we get to that, the chair recognizes Chairman Harris.
Madam President, I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of the Rules Committee report, including the recommendation of the appointment of a new alderman for the 12th Ward and associated resolution establishing her committee membership and other items. Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for your committee and committees on rules, which met yesterday, December 13, 2022, the committee recommends passage of the appointment of Annabelle Annabelle Abarkah as the 12th Ward Alderman.
Chairman Harris, if you could just pause for a moment while we get everybody aligned. Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, stand at ease for three minutes. Chairman Harris.
Madam President, I renew my motion for the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of the Rules Committee Report, including the recommendation of the appointment of a, of a new alderman for the twelfth ward and associated resolution establishing her committee membership and other items.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President and members of the city council, reporting for your committees on committees and rules, which met yesterday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, the committee recommends passage of the appointment of Annabelle Abarka as the twelfth ward alderman.
Thank you, Chairman Harris. Are there any members of the city council who wish to speak to this item? Chairman Harris.
I am always in, in the.
The ladies.
V A. I'll, I'll close.
The chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I stand to be associated with this appointment. This is a good appointment, someone who's, has a track record in understanding how to deliver constituent services. Now you'll be in charge of ensuring that those constituent services actually get delivered. I also am excited to have you join the caucus and, and bring some knowledge as an attorney to help guide the, the policy decisions that the caucus will be moving forward. So we're very excited about this appointment, looking forward to working with you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Chairman Viegas. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Again, also welcome to the council on behalf of the Automatic Black Caucus. We look forward to working with you and the constituents in the twelfth ward. And again, it's still not too late if you choose to turn around, but nonetheless, welcome.
The chair recognizes Alderman Haddon.
Congratulations. Looking forward to working with you, to your family and support system that are here. Make sure you invest a lot of time, energy, resources, and stress management, coping strategies, health plans, all kinds of fun things to back you up. I know that you've been in the ward office and you know the type of work that it takes. But now you'll be in this seat, and it's a little slightly different, but I won't warn you away like some of my colleagues. I think it's very worth, it's very worth the work. It's worth the responsibility, and congratulations on joining this body.
Thank you, Alderman Haddon. The chair recognizes Alderman Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. Annabelle, on behalf of the newbie caucus, the unofficial newbie caucus, welcome, welcome to the club. I'm gonna be happy to have you as a seatmate, and in particular, as a neighbor, neighboring ward. Look forward to working with you very closely as we have some, we've got some, some constituents that are going to be switching places and getting to know each other's wards in that way. So thank you very much and good luck, and I'll see you soon.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. Annabelle, best wishes to you. Just to let you know, I know, you know, you know, we're joking when we say it's not too late to run, but we know you know what the job's about. We know you know the demands, the hours, so on and so forth, so I'm sure you're up to the task. There are forty-nine people here you could lean on anytime, so hopefully you get everybody's phone number. Any help, we're all here. Probably best leaning on the three newbies that could probably help you more than any of us can, letting you know what's going on, so. But with that, just want to wish you the best, look forward to working with you, and hopefully, you know, you and me win our elections and we're working together for four more years, so best wishes to you.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato. The chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much. I also like the rise in support of this appointment. Congratulations to you, Annabelle. I want to thank you for helping my friend, George Godinez. Thank you for your patience with him. You're, you're a strong lady, you know, and you helped to propel him to where he is. I know a lot of staff, or a lot of us, really do a lot of the work for us in the community, so I appreciate what you've done. You know the community, and I know you're gonna do well. So congratulations to you, and we're all here to help you. Thank you.
You, Alderman Burnett. Any other members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning, members of the city council, and good morning, Annabelle, and to your family. It's a Christmas miracle, not just because of my clothes, but I get to actually commend the mayor on this pick, someone I know personally, someone that my husband and I both have had the pleasure of working next to, both for the greater good of our shared constituencies, but also on the political front as well. And to say that we've been in the trenches together before and to see you here now is truly a remarkable thing that I am proud to be a part of, to witness. I also want to offer my services, in case you need any good fashion sense. I do have none, but Hugo is available for you. But I do have a word of caution for my colleagues as well about Annabelle. Don't take her lightly. She comes from great stock, and if you didn't know, she could deadlift two hundred and ninety pounds very easily, which means she could probably take out any one of us at any given time if we don't cooperate and show us, show her our best. So, Madam President, I gladly support your nomination. I welcome you to your seat and look forward to working with you now and in years to come. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, I was just, you know, gonna ditto what everybody else said, but the young lady in the back of you in the pink, is that your niece, your daughter, your sister? Well, she is so excited and happy up there. She is, she's, she's sitting tall, her face is looking, she's smiling, and what that tells me is that when somebody young and somebody sees somebody winning that they can see themselves in, and I think that's what she sees, she sees herself in you, that does, that's big, and that's what this is about. And I, you know, you served as chief of staff, nobody has to preach to you, nobody has to tell you what it takes because, and for all intents purposes, you were a good chief of staff, that means you were the alderman, you just weren't sitting here taking votes. And so you know what to do already, you know to put the people first, and I welcome you to this chambers, and as always, we're here to support you, and you make sure you just keep your independent voice for your people. All right, thank you so much.
Annabelle, first off, congratulations. I, I've had, I loved our couple of calls that we've had over the past few weeks. The, the feeling you're probably having of excitement and nerves and adrenaline, because we know outside of this, you're, you're doing some work to, to keep the job, is something, something to carry forward. I wanted to say I, I know how involved you, you've been. I'm looking forward to working with you, and we'll all, always have the, the special relationship that Nicole Lee and Monique Scott and I have of the newbies. So I've got to make the joke now that it's nice to be senior to one person on, on council, but I'm really just excited, excited to work with you. You know, we've talked a lot about things that we can all do together going forward and, and kind of representing a, a new crop coming in, and I look forward to our next conversations, and just huge congratulations, take it all in, take a breath, and it's gonna be exciting.
Thank you. The chair recognizes, thank you, Alderman Canutson. The chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Madam President, Annabelle, welcome to the, to the, to the work, to the discipline, to city council. As the chair of the Chicago Latino Caucus Foundation, Viegas is on the council side, I'm on the foundation side. It's gonna be good to have you. The former alderman was very involved and engaged. I'm looking forward to you being just as involved and engaged as the alderwoman of the twelfth ward. We share some boundaries, and I'm looking forward to working with you at this time to make sure that we're improving our communities. Everybody okay back there? Awesome. And, you know, the, the work ahead is difficult, but it requires steadfast leadership, committed leadership, and I know you're gonna be committed to that work, and I look forward to working with you, not just citywide, but particularly in our neck of the woods as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. Chairman Harris, I think it's back to you.
Thank you. I just want to say, on behalf of the Rules Committee, welcome. I'm excited and thrilled about having another female be down here and work with us, so welcome, welcome, welcome. So I move passage of this appointment by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, please use the e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open. All right, I will take a voice vote for anyone who hasn't voted yet. Alderman Laspada. Alderman Laspada is a yes. Alderman Dahl. Alderman Dahl is a yes. Alderman Curtis, not present. Alderman Brookins, oh, he has came in. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, not present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa, not present. Alderman Martin, Alderman Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman, Alderman Osterman is a yes. Oh, Alderman Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Curtis is not. He's not on the floor. Voting is now closed.
All right. There are forty-three yays, no nays. I'm sorry, forty-four yays, no nays. Alderman Capelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. The nays have it, the motion for reconsideration fails. Ms. Barca, please come to the dais. The oath of office will be administered by the Honorable Rosa Silva, Judge of the Circuit Court of Cook County, and among the many friends and family members joining Ms. Barker are Jose Abarka, her father, Julia Quasida, her mother, Angelica Abarka, her sister, Anaya Galante, her niece, who will be holding the Bible.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Annabela Barca, do solemnly swear.
I, Annabela Barca, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of alderman.
Of the office of alderman.
Of the city of Chicago.
Of the city of Chicago.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
I'm just happy to finally see a group of people standing up there at a regular height. It's fantastic.
Regular height. Regular height.
Alderman Abarka, do you wish to address the body?
I do.
Please proceed.
Thank you, council members, for your support and for the opportunity to speak before this distinguished body. I am honored and excited to join you as a colleague. I want to thank Mayor Lightfoot, the Appointment Committee, and the residents of the twelfth ward. I'd like to thank my friends and mentors who have guided me, Yessenya, Rudy, Adam, Michelle, Jim, Mara, Juan, Anel, Tessa, Kate Carey, and a list so long that I am reminded of just how blessed I am. I want to thank my family, my sister Angelica, my niece Naya, my brother Mario, my tia Annabelle, and my family watching in Mexico. I'd like to thank the staff and the volunteers of the twelfth ward. I'd like to thank the staff and the volunteers of the 12th Ward. My law firm, Fagri Drinker, for their support, and partners Nick, Lenny, and Sulema. I'd like to thank Commissioner Nacardenas for his support, for the invaluable lessons. Working as Chief of Staff was the best possible training for this job. And my parents. Porque yo soy hija de papás inmigrantes. Padres que como miles de otros vinieron a este país con la fortaleza para sobresalir. Y que han sacrificado todo lo posible para los hijos. Y como muchos de nuestra comunidad, yo soy la hija que ayudó cuando mi mamá no hablaba inglés. Como el hijo que fue el primer de ir a la secundaria. Mis papás me enseñaron a enfrentarme los casos difíciles. Me enseñaron que tomé acción sin temor. Me enseñaron que en todo lo que haga, que lo haga con integridad y convicción. Y me enseñaron que nuestros logros no son aislados, son también de la comunidad. Que los logros son para celebrar y para edificar a todos que nos han ayudado. Gracias a mis papás porque ellos han sido y son la razón de mi causa y la causa de mi razón. Hard work, integrity, love of family, love of our city, and uplifting others. These are the principles and values that I was taught as a child and that so many of our communities share. These principles and values have guided me through college, when I interned for the European Union, grad school, when I was registering voters in hundred-degree weather, law school, and as an attorney. Where Latinas make up two percent of the legal field. And where I help expunge records to put lives back on track. And so it is these principles, these lessons, this work ethic, that I take with me and I pledge to give my one hundred percent to Echar Legana Siempre. And to put them into action as I serve the residents of the 12th Ward. Thank you.
All right, Chairman Harris, I'm sorry, uh Madam Clerk, we've called the roll. Sergeant at Arms, will you please escort our new alderman to her seat? And Madam Clerk, will you please add Alderwoman Abarka to the roll for purposes of quorum? Chairman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. The second item on our report is a resolution updating our committee assignments. Resolution to include Alderman Abarka replacing the former alderman. I've moved passage by the same roll call in the Rules Committee report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Knowing that Alderman Spazado is voting no.
Well, with that noted objection.
Also, Alderman Beal is a no.
With those two noted objections and no others, so ordered.
Thank you. The third item on the report is an ordinance correcting the City Council Journal of Proceedings of April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. I move passage of this in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The fourth item on the report is an ordinance correcting the City Council Journal of Proceedings of July twentieth, twenty-twenty-one regarding an ordinance amending uh Ramova Theater Restoration Zero Two, Zero Two Two Dash Two Three Four Zero. I move passage of this item in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And the final item on the report is a resolution regarding election of Alvin Starks as Sergeant at Arms, Levita Parnell, Torian Cox, and Anthony P. Park Harper as Assistant Sergeant at Arms for the remainder of the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty-three City Council term. I move passage of the item in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report. I now move that we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, we have resolutions. Um the first of which is a memorial resolution for Mirna Salazar. All right. Make sure that we get folks into the box. The newbies. Hey, are we ready? All right, ladies and gentlemen, for those of you who don't know, Mirna Salazar passed away unexpectedly um earlier this year. Her death brought a significant amount of sadness across our city uh because of the great works that she uh performed here in Chicago. And the legacy that she left, particularly um in the arts community. We have a resolution um sponsored by myself and Alderman Viegas um to honor her uh legacy. Uh here are members of her family, including uh her two uh daughters. Are there members of the body uh that wish to speak uh to this resolution? The Chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand to be associated with this uh resolution. Mirna Salazar was a once-in-a-lifetime visionary and creator of possibility and a Chicago, Chicago icon. She was a Latina trailblazer whose impact on art, education, and business throughout the city has shattered ceilings and paved the way for countless generations to come.
For interrupting, in my haste, I've neglected to uh seek a suspension of the rules to consider these um the resolution. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move for temporary suspension of the rules so we can um uh consider these, for the many consideration for these resolutions.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Apologies, Alderman Viegas, please continue.
Mirna was a force and dynamic leader. She was the first Puerto Rican Day Parade Queen in nineteen sixty-six. She contributed to the development of Paseo Boricua in Humboldt Park. She was the co-founder and executive director of the Chicago Latino Theater Alliance. She was a member of many boards, including the City of Chicago Advisory Council on Cultural Affairs and Special Events. Her greatest work was Destinos, the Chicago International Latino Theater Festival, which is Chicago's annual citywide festival that showcases Latino theater artists and companies from Chicago, US, and Latin America. Mirna Salazar was a true changemaker at a time that was especially difficult and unheard of for women, much less Latinas. We're so proud to acknowledge what she's done for Chicago. When I've mentioned her name in other communities, she was always well-respected as well. She was always championing Chicago everywhere she went in the arts, encouraging people to come to Chicago to see what it is that we had to offer. She'll be missed. And I, and again, I'm so, my condolences to the family. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam President. I also would like to express my deepest sense of condolences to the family of Mirna Salazar. Um I met Mirna maybe about twenty-five years ago. Um at the time, she was already working for the West Town Economic Development Corporation. And um, and I, in, during the time in which I started and engaged into a relation, uh, a relationship with her, uh I learned about her two daughters who are here today, whom I think I met at least maybe ten, fifteen years ago, when they were still ten years old or eleven years old. Um but I, I do remember um also learning that she was the first uh Puerto Rican queen uh of the Puerto Rican uh festival um and the Puerto Rican Parade Committee. And obviously, when you would look at her, yeah, it was almost undeniable not to believe that. She was absolutely gorgeous. She was beautiful. Uh and, and one of the things that I learned from her years later uh was her passion for Latino theater. And I did not know that she had moved from the um West Town Economic Development uh movement and endeavor into working for the arts and trying to develop and solidify the Latino theater um area in the city of Chicago. And so um and I also remember on a personal level, I mean, she used to, I mean, we have a, we used to have a very friendly, personal relationship. And she used to tell me over the years, Roberto, tú me acuerdas mucho de mi primer esposo. You re- you remind me so much about my ex-husband. Junior Michel, that's, that's in Puerto Rican, it's Michel, right? Junior Michel. He used, uh, we used to call it Junior Michel. I never met him. Uh I had never met him in my life. Uh but I, to me, I never asked her if that was good or that was bad. I just left it at that. But you know, I always gonna remember uh Mirna as a very good personal friend. We could, we possibly would not see each other for a year or two years, and it was like seeing her and engaging in a conversation like if I had seen her the day before. That's how engaging she was and how, how um, and that was the type of personal impact she left upon you. She will be missed. You have a wonderful, beautiful mother, and I know that you're gonna cherish it in your, in your heart, and I know that she's looking upon you right now as we speak.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. And I also rise in support of this resolution. To Mirna's family, um I had one opportunity um to spoke with your uh, with your mom a couple of times in a previous life, my job at United Airlines. Um and I, I recall um hearing the news of her passing suddenly and just thinking to myself, what a loss for our community. You didn't need to know her very well um to understand and feel all of the passion that she had for the work that she did. That just oozed out of her. Um so I want to, I want to thank you for her and her contribution to this entire city. Um we were talking about Destinos when uh, when I was introduced to her. And uh it was so clear the passion that she had for the arts and what that delivers and gives to our community, and not just the Latino community of the city of Chicago, but to the world and the arts as a way to unite people. So please know that she made uh an indelible mark on many people, even someone like me who only met her a couple of times. Um I'm so very sorry for your loss. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. Uh the Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
You know, um I didn't get a chance to know Ms. Salazar well. But I know throughout my years of work in the community um that I passed her many, many a time. And I have some very good friends in the dais there. And I know that if she was a good friend of them, she would have been a great friend of mine. Um I've read so much about her excellence and the legacy that she will leave to our great city um that I just had to make sure to stand and rise and be associated with this and just offer you my condolences, but then also offer you um your blessings, because the fact is that we're all blessed for her presence, but especially those who are closest to her. So um you know, spend the rest of the day celebrating her life as we will as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I should add that in the box are her daughters, uh Eliana Romero, Yvette Sharp, Sarah Carranza, a Director of Communications, Esteban Schemberg, Production Coordinator, Marty Castro, uh who needs no introduction, but Board Chair and CEO and President of Casa Central, uh Carlos Tortola, also needing uh no introduction, the President and Founder of the Mexican Museum. Also, uh Mari Carmen, a family friend, and Amy McCarty. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here. The Chair next recognizes Alderman Ciccho Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and um to the family and the friends here uh today on behalf of the Twenty-Fifth Ward residents or uh heartfelt condolences and or deep admiration for, for Mirna. I had the opportunity to meet her in several locations. As you know, Tilsin is uh a center for local, especially Latinx artists across the city. And I tell you that I have never met such a dynamic, compassionate, undetermined person. She uh exemplifies what we like to see of leaders in our community and in our local artists, we have tremendous leadership. Mirna represented that. She will certainly be missed in our community. She was not only a person of great determination, but great creativity. She discussed with us way on how we can repurpose, utilize, and expand our spaces for local artists. I am so glad to see artists, local artists like Ricardo Gamoa, who are so close to her, mentored by her. And now we have spaces that have been utilized as the Apple Building, as you know. It was wonderful to see uh now or artists having spaces where they can do local um, local theater, which has been missing our community. Great credit for Mirna and her vision, the determination. Uh and her legacy lives on with the man, wonderful, wonderful initiatives that she created like Destinos. It was such an honor to have the pleasure to work a little bit with her uh during one of the most difficult times in the city of Chicago. And I tell you that she was out there as, as a, as the determined leader that she was, despite the difficulties and challenges, she was out there, walking the walk with our community, as challenging it has been, and making this um, this, creating this legacy that will lives on, that lives on in our community. So to the family, to you, our commitment to keep honoring her legacy with actions and to continue to pu- support local artists in our community and beyond, her legacy lives on and is um, it is a pleasure to, to see you today uh with us, our deepest condolences. She'll be dearly missed.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
You, Madam Chair, I too rise to be associated with this ordinance. It's great that we, as the representatives of this great city, can take a moment to remember Mirna Salazar. She was an icon, she was a trailblazer, she was someone who took risks to advance the interests of her community. And because of her work, she helped put the Chicago theater community on the map. She made an impact not just locally, but nationally and globally. She was someone who understood the necessity to work across lines of nationality to advance the agenda for the Latino community and for all Chicagoans. And so for that, it's such a great honor to be able to recognize her today, to remember her. Um she was truly someone who left an impact. And so despite the fact that she's no longer here with us today, her legacy continues, and we're gonna continue to feel the work that she's done for many generations to come. So thank you to her family for sharing us, for sharing her with us for all these years. Um our deepest condolences and uh may she rest in peace.
Thank you, Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Any other members that would wish to speak to this resolution? I stand with the entire body um to speak to this resolution. Uh today, we have the great honor of recognizing the life and legacy of Mirna Salazar, your mother, your friend, your colleague. Up until her passing this summer, Ms. Salazar was hard at work, doing what she loved most, which was paving pathways for Latinx artists to find success and thrive in the theater industry. And I want to talk a little bit about the work that she did over so many years. As Alderman Maldonado stated, she got her start advocating for Chicago's Latinx community by working at the West Town Economic Development Corporation. And as an economic development specialist there, she helped to generate millions of dollars in housing and business development. An effort that would eventually shape um our iconic uh Puerto Rican neighborhood and the Humboldt Park neighborhood as a whole.
iconic Puerto Rican neighborhood and the Humboldt Park neighborhood as a whole. This work would inspire and prepare Ms. Salazar to create her own talent agency, which she presided over for 25 years, and helped to further the careers of many beloved Latinx Chicago artists. And in the years after that, she dedicated her time and talents to a variety of organizations, including the Chicago Board of Education, the Choose Chicago Board, the League of Chicago Theaters Board, and even our own city's Advisory Council on Cultural Affairs and Special Events, which is where I met her. Time and again, through iconic works such as Destinos, the Chicago International Latino Theater Festival, Ms. Salazar found ways to uplift Latinx culture and creatives. And she will always be remembered as a changemaker who overcame many barriers. But I will say, one of the things that struck me most was the beautiful words that her daughter spoke at her funeral. One can only hope that our children appreciate the sacrifices that we've done for them, but also our contributions to our community in a way that you celebrated your mother. I don't think there was a dry eye in the church that was packed and overflowing. People came to celebrate, to mourn, but to also grieve with you and support you on your journey through your own grief and loss of your mother. So I just want to say, thank you. I think you're a beautiful legacy and testament to how powerful your mother was as a Latina, brave and bold and innovative, and her legacy will live on for many lifetimes to come. And thank you for allowing us to honor her and honor you, your family, friends, and colleagues. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move adoption of the resolution by a rising vote.
Please rise. Our next resolution is one brought by our colleague, Alderman Deborah Silverstein. Alderman?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank my colleagues for supporting the resolution condemning Kanye West's anti-Semitic actions. The 50th Ward felt the string of antisemitism earlier this year. Swastikas were drawn on synagogues and schools, and windows were broken at Jewish-owned businesses and places of worship. The attacks came merely days after Holocaust Remembrance Day. Tragically, hate is on the rise. Anti-Semitic incidents like these have increased by 430% in Illinois between 2016 and 2021, according to the Anti-Defamation League. Locally, hate crimes are up 71% in Chicago this year. The most frequent targets are Jewish residents. The Chicago metropolitan area has one of the world's largest concentrations of Jewish households, with a population of more than 300,000 people. Many of those residents are centered around the 50th Ward. We have more synagogues and Jewish-owned businesses in a two-mile stretch here than in the rest of the city combined. When public figures like Kanye West are love-free to spout antisemitic hate speech, attacks on Jews follow. His public support of Hitler and Nazi emboldens bigots. And when he posts swastikas on Twitter, Jewish-owned businesses and synagogues fear that they may find one spray-painted on their walls. Don't believe it? In November, Vandal sprayed painted Kanye Was Right, along with swastikas on more than a dozen gravestones in a Jewish cemetery in Waukegan. Similar banners were hung over a Los Angeles freeway in October, and we all heard someone say the same thing just a couple of months ago during public comment and city council. This is not a coincidence. Hate is like a disease, and it spreads when it's not confronted. Eli Wiesel, the author of Night, and one of the most powerful chroniclers of the Holocaust, once said, "We must take sides. Neutrality helps the oppressor, never the victim. Silence encourages the tormentor, never the tormented." It is time to take a side. It is time to confront Kanye and other antisemites, to condemn him and stop giving him a platform for spreading hate and lies. Thank you.
Thank you for, Alderman Silverstein. Thank you for bringing this forward. As we talked about at one of our last meetings, we cannot tolerate hate in our city, and Eli Wiesel was 100% right. If we are silent and we're bystanders, hate wins, and we must do everything we can to stamp it out. So thank you for bringing forth this resolution, and particularly emphasizing the aftermath of the consequences of Kanye West's hateful speech. Thank you. Any other members of the body that we should speak to this resolution?
The chair recognizes Alderman Knudsen.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Alderman Silverstein, for bringing forward this resolution. I'm very proud to co-sponsor this resolution, and I'm proud to represent a very strong Jewish community in the 43rd Ward. What we're doing from the ward side to talk about fight against antisemitism is a lot of speaking about it publicly and speaking about how hate is, hate is on the rise against the Jewish community as well as other communities. We've, we've seen a spike of antisemitic language within, within our ward, the 43rd Ward, as well as anti-LGBTQ language with a few recent incidents. It's up to all of us to speak on these issues and be very straightforward, that we do not condone any of this language. We see what this language does in communities. With the LGBTQ community, we recently saw horrific shooting in Colorado Springs. We had a resolution earlier, a couple of months ago, against the, the crimes and shootings that have been against the Jewish community. We have to fight this. We have to acknowledge that hate is on the rise. And I, I want to join Alderman Silverstein, just in recommending everyone talk about this very straightforward with your wards. Thank you, and I'm proud to co-sponsor.
Thank you, Alderman Knudsen. Any other members of the body? Alderman Kapelman?
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this. I grew up in Baytown, Texas, right outside Houston, and there was a Jewish family that lived directly across the street from us. And one day, there was a burning cross placed on their front lawn. That burning cross was placed on their front lawn because Mr. Manny, a Jewish attorney, was advocating for the rights of the African-American community. So here is a Jewish man standing up for other people who are also experiencing extreme discrimination. He was doing that because he understood discrimination himself. So our planet, if it ends, it will be because of people warring with each other, just because of their beliefs or their looks. It's just ludicrous. It's crazy. So thank you for speaking up, and it's our duty to always, always speak up. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Kapelman. The chair recognizes Alderman Vegas.
Thank you, Madam President. And I stand to be associated with this resolution as well, and I appreciate my colleague from the 50th Ward bringing this up. When I was reading the resolution, it was mind-boggling to see that antisemitic incidents have increased by 430% in Illinois, 430% in Illinois, and hate crimes are up 71% in Chicago alone. Let's remember that Kanye West has millions of followers around the world, and his social media and his public statements greatly increase the risk of future attacks against the Jewish community. I appreciate that this body's standing up, because we have to stand up to hate wherever it rears its ugly head. So thank you for bringing this resolution forward.
Any other members of the body that we should speak to this resolution? Thank you again, Alderman. We stand with you and we stand with our Jewish brothers and sisters across the city, across the region, across the state. Thank you. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, we have a resolution brought by Alderman Spazato and others. The chair recognizes some school resource officers in the noble work that they did to support one of the students in our school. The chair recognizes Alderman Thalia Pharoah.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, reading through the, reading through the resolution, the acts of these two officers before us goes well beyond the scope of their duties and responsibilities. And because the resolution is not very lengthy, Madam President, I move that the clerk's office read the resolution into record, if there are no objections.
There are no objections.
Thank you, Madam President.
Peter, can you read the resolution?
Whereas, in recognition of their service and appreciation for their positive community outreach, the members of this chamber are pleased to honor Officer John Bauer and Officer Katerina Nowakowski. And whereas, Officer Bauer and Officer Nowakowski, beloved school resource officers at Foreman High School, who have, who have made it a point to help students in and outside the school. And whereas, after Foreman High School student Omaran James tragically lost both his sister and his brother to gun violence, Officer Bauer and Officer Nowakowski took Omaran under their wing and became a mentor to him. And whereas, when Officer Bauer found out that Omaran was not hearing back from colleges, he contacted the recruiting office at Jacksonville State University on Omaran's behalf, helping Omaran secure a spot at the school, which reduced tuition and became the first in his family to go to college. And whereas, Officer Bauer and Officer Nowakowski helped Omaran both physically and emotionally prepare for and get to college, including Officer Bauer driving him the 11 hours to the campus and starting a GoFundMe to help Omaran pay for college. And whereas, Omaran is not the only student that Officer Bauer and Officer Nowakowski have assisted during their time at Foreman High School, and they have developed such a strong relationships with students that they have even met a student as he left the hospital after months of recuperation from gunshot wounds. And whereas, Officer Bauer and Officer Nowakowski demonstrate on a daily basis the excellent work that Chicago police officers can do all around the city of Chicago. Now therefore, it be resolved that we, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of Chicago, assembled this 14th day of December 2022, to hereby honor or to hereby commend Officer James Bauer and Officer Katerina Nowakowski for their service, express to them our heartfelt gratitude for going above and beyond the call of duty to help students at Foreman High School, and extend to them our best wishes for continued growth and success. And be it further resolved that a suitable copy of this resolution be presented to Officer John Bauer and Officer Katerina Nowakowski and placed on permanent record in their personnel files as a sign of our appreciation and esteem.
Thank you, sir. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Metz.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I stand here today, we just heard a resolution on hate, but now we are hearing a resolution on love, on caring, on being the good Samaritan that we all should be. I stand here to share with you Omaran, Omar James is a resident of the 37th Ward. I really didn't put the name with the face until I saw him again. He like, you know, my grandmother. I said, what's her name? Betty Fletcher. Oh, yeah, she works for me. Now, you got that one. So this family have endured a lot of tragedy. I was there when his sister Amara passed away, that gunshot through the house as she was there, sitting on the couch. This family have went through tremendous tragedy. But Omar, Amara, you have exemplified some strength. I saw the courage in you, the determination to move forward, to share what your brother and sister could not get a chance to do, that opportunity. You are determined to do it. But for our officers, there's not enough thank yous that I could even give you. As I shared to you, this young man would not have had that opportunity if you had not opened up your heart to give it to him. You didn't look at him as another young black man that's not gonna be anything. You looked beyond that to say, what can I do to help him, even though he's not white? He's black. He wouldn't be in college. Maybe if I'd have took him down there, I might have had a little problem. I think race has an issue here, and you can see, if you just open up your heart and cross that line a little bit, we can help some of these children. And that's what you're doing. You're doing that by not being that police officer in the school, talking to them as if they are criminals already. No, you're reaching out to them as a human being and mother, or daughter, or your niece or nephew. That's the way you're treating them. That's why they're so open to you. You take off that, that badge, that badge of your regular duty of a police officer and give to them that other side. I am so grateful to you for being that mother there for him, being that mentor for him. Who would have ever thought someone would take time out to care for a young man and take him to college? Make a call and still mentoring him today. That's why he's sitting here. And you can see him every time you look at his face, if you just talk to him, he got a smile that's out of sight. He's just grinning from ear to ear. You see nothing but the whitening teeth. That's because he's happy. Ain't nothing wrong with being happy, you all. Nothing wrong with that. Happy make you feel good. It make things work inside. It take away all the negativities that you might experience in your body when you smile. So you just keep on smiling. You keep on working with them, and we will keep working with you as well. So thank you so much. I was very honored to have given you that certificate. Probably didn't even know who I was giving it to, but wanted to help, because that's what I am. I'm a giver and a helper. I love to be able to do that. And that's what the office, that's why I can recognize something different here. And that's what we all should be here in the world, something different, helping each other. That's what the world is all about. So let me say thank you again, from the bottom of my heart, for all of the residents and all of them who can't say thank you. You should be, your story should be told more. I saw it on the news, but it was only a short news breaking story, but it should be one that should be shared where everybody know that, that people need to help each other. And it don't matter what color you are. It don't matter where you came from. It don't matter what you think, but why don't you try to get to them and try to help them? So thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and congratulations to you all and to the principal over there. We appreciate you for being here with us today, and I know you should be very proud of those officers there, Officer Bauer and Officer Katerina, who have worked so hard in the school to make it a better place and a more pleasant place for children to learn. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Metz. The chair recognizes Alderman Cardona.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand before you, supporting this resolution.
It's very, it's overwhelming to see one of my, which is one of the high schools in my ward, Foreman High School, one of the kids have the support from the SROs from Officer Bauer and Nowakowski. I met, funny story, I met Omaran back in twenty twenty. We were doing a food drive with Foreman High School. And Principal Escamilla, who's there in the box, we had a conversation. And he told me what he went through with his sister and, and, and brother. And it broke my heart, but I saw something in this kid like that I don't see in any other thing. Yes, he played football. And yes, he, I had a conversation, real short conversation with him. I think I told him, he, you know, no matter what happens, you're here, focus on, you know, try and get recruited and so forth. Behold, I did not know that they were passing him up. And Officer Bauer and his partner came and stepped in. And it tells you about the program of the SROs in the Chicago Public Schools. You have SROs who do care, police officers that are there. And from what I see, when I go to Foreman High School, I come visit Principal Escamilla more than often. I see how the kids really surround themselves with the two officers. And, you know, they mentor them, they give them advice. And it's something that it's well needed in our Chicago Public Schools, especially our high schools. But I'm so happy, I did not know that Officer Bauer was helping and his partner helping him to get a college. Officer Bauer came to my office, he told me, and I was just shocked that he, he actually got him into Jackson University. Jackson State University. So I'm here to tell you, Omaran, keep going, like I told you last time. Make your, make your family proud and make your neighborhood proud. And you also made those three people very, you know, they, they, what they do in life is what, helping you and getting to you to succeed. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Cardona. The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution to Officer Bauer and Officer Nowakowski. Thank you for putting that uniform on every day. Thank you for protecting us. Thank you for opening your heart. Chicago police officers sometimes get a bad rap. It's unfortunate. Not a lot of people see what's behind that vest or what's in your mind or how much you love the city of Chicago and are willing to serve the city of Chicago, not just as a police officer, but as a brother, as a sister, as a mother, or as a father. You took an individual under your wing, both of you, and you helped them out. And that goes a long way. And I know you didn't do it for any other purpose than you're just good people. And that means the world to us. Omaran, embrace this, make us proud, play it forward and go get them. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Napolitano. The chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this resolution. I want to personally thank both these officers for giving him a new, you have awarded him a new lease on life. I don't even know you and, and this story was, 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 was just awesome. Now you have to go out there, everyone has a purpose in life. Now you have to go out there and do the same thing that they have done for you. Again, officers, I want to thank you. You didn't have to do it, but you did it anyway. It should be more, more, more people like you. Thank you so much, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Curtis. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Nugent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I too rise in support of this resolution. Officer Bauer and Officer Nowakowski, I love what you did here. And I think this is such a great example of how we can help others in our community. And I love that you are also in the sixteenth district, which services the Thirty-Ninth Ward. So thank you for all you do. But I also want to honor Omarian here today too, because you clearly underwent tremendous tragedy in your home. And instead of resting, you decided to go forward and go to school and keep moving on. And you're a real tremendous person to watch right now. And we're, we're so happy for you in the Thirty-Ninth Ward and we want to support you in any way we can. And so keep doing good things and we're just excited to, to see what you do next. So thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderwoman Nugent. Any other members of the body that wish to speak to this? Alderman Talia Farrell.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise and supported this resolution. I mean, I, I wanted this read into record simply because I, I think members of this chamber need to hear the great work that these officers, and that's John and Kathy, because I think that's what they call you over at Foreman, John and Kathy. I, I think they need to hear this extraordinary work along with the principal that they're doing at Foreman. But also I think there are thousands that are on social media that would not have had an opportunity to see the good work that they're doing. Unfortunately, as, as my colleague said, that oftentimes you see the negative printed on the front page and, and, and that goes across our local media about our police officers and our police department. And oftentimes we don't see enough of the good that they do. And in this particular case, it's beyond good, it's, it's great. I was floored, literally. I, I had a mentoring program when I was a young police officer, but what John and Kathy doing, are doing goes beyond what is just your basic mentorship. To help see one of the students at Foreman get into college and then to drive them all the way to college goes beyond what we see our police officers doing every day. And so I want to thank John and Kathy for their dedication and their love for Omarian. And Omarian, I, I think we've pronounced your name probably six or seven different times, but we say it out of love. And so I want to thank John and Kathy for just extending their heart to you to go beyond what most of us see our police officers doing. And so keep up the good work because it is making a difference. And even if it's making a difference just in one person's life, that's a person that you will see flourish in the future because of your good work and your heart and your love for him and the principal as well. Thank you for being here today and showing your students that you care and you love them. Omaran, I, I'm very proud of you. As I had an opportunity to speak with you, I understand that you, and I thought you were still in high school. So I asked you what grade were you in and you told me you were a freshman. I didn't know you were a freshman in college. But I want to say I congratulate you being the first in your, your family to go to college. You certainly could have given up hope at the loss of your brother and sister to gun violence. But you chose a different route. And that tells me a lot about your character. And that tells me a lot about your self-esteem and the love that you have for yourself. To allow someone that doesn't necessarily look like you to mentor you, to give you advice. And so I ask that you continue to be open about how you're feeling, how you're doing in school with John and Kathy. Because just because you're in college, you can see that they have not stopped extending their love to you. So, Madam President, I want to thank them so much and, and their recognition should go well beyond what we see in a resolution today. But what I would like to see, I would like to see our Sun Time and Tribune and our local media aim the camera on them and write a story about this good work that they're doing. Madam President, I'll close with this. Not only a few short years ago, we, we debated the SRO program. We debated whether or not we need officers in our school or whether they're better served on our streets and not in our school. I present to you and the members of this body, why I fought so hard to keep them in that school. Because there are good that they're doing in this school. We don't know where Omarian might be without their love and support. And so I stand up very proudly to say that we have officers that go well beyond what they're required, go well beyond eight and a half hours that they serve every day. They go even so far as to drive a student to his next assignment in life. And that's college, no matter what that distance may be. We have officers that are willing to stand up and do a GoFundMe page for Alderman Talia Farrell. I'm sorry, a GoFundMe page. That slipped out. But they're willing to stand up and do a GoFundMe page for a student that they love with all their heart. So, Madam President, even though I inject a little humor, I think it's very serious that we really put our officers on the front page of our presses to make sure that they are recognized for the great work that they do. Thank you, Officer John and Officer Kathy.
Alderman Spazato.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Been a long time coming. I've been trying to get this resolution for a while, but boy, am I happy we have it when we're having it. Couldn't have been at a better time. Couldn't have been a happier resolution at a happier time of the year, Christmas time. So I thank you. I also want to thank one of my many friends in the media, John Garcia from Channel Seven. If not for John doing this story, we would not have known about Omarian. Everybody's name is Omarian and John and Kathy and Foreman High School. So thank you, John. Thank you for that. Chris, you stole a little bit of my thunder about calling out the media and putting out positive stuff. So all you listen there, you could tweet your negative, what you want about me or whatever, but let's start tweeting and, and getting some more positive stories out there. This is the ultimate feel-good, great story of tragedy and happiness and you name it. And two beautiful people, Kathy and John, a middle-aged white male. We all caught, we, we all talked about what they are. So he's a white male and a, a, a young lady that could be my daughter. So awesome job to John and Kathy. Appreciate you. Omarian, we're all proud of you. And I don't know if you all know, Omarian's on track to be on the basketball team. So he's, he is at a, he, he is at a D-one school. So it's a little tough when you're a guy that's probably six feet tall and a hundred and, you know, fifty pounds. So it's probably a little tough to play D-one, but he's working towards that amongst all the other things. Also this summer, Omarian will be looking for a job, Mayor Alderman Metz. So if you have anybody in need for anything, he certainly wants to stay on track. So certainly would like to see him get a nice summer job. But I just can't thank John and Kathy, they're obviously are our friends of mine. I got, I'm only, I only know them because I'm, I'm the Alderman and they're the police officers. They used to work one of my beats. They took on this SRO job, a job that somehow, some way got to be very controversial and negative. I don't know why it is. And I could assure you, there's not as, not the great story of this is, but there is many, many positive stories about SROs taking kids under their wing, looking after them. I know I have, I have two high schools in my ward, one of them has SROs in it. Excuse me, guys. Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. So, you know, I have, I have a, a high school in my ward that I know the SROs are, are well loved over there. So great job to both of you. Best of wishes to Omarian, overcoming the tragedy. I can't imagine, can't imagine, would like to lose a couple siblings so young, so much life ahead of them. Just all look forward, we're all rooting for you. John and Kathy, somehow, some way, I believe this is not going to be the last time you're going to be here. So hopefully you get to stay at Foreman for a while. I don't know how much time you have left, John. I think you had like twenty-five years, so hopefully you stay another five. You get to stay at, at the school. I'm sure the principal, if he's there, he'd love to have, keep you guys. So with that, I don't know what more to say. My, my colleagues are awesome on what they said. Just a positive, great story. And once again, Madam President, thank you. Thank you, John Garcia, for putting this story out there so we can all see it. And that's about it. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato. I'll be brief because I think a lot of what needed to be said has been said. But I feel like this is like a parable. We have a young man challenged in life and could have gone many directions. Could have stopped his growth because of obvious despair and tragedy. But he lifted himself up and reached for the next run and the ladder. We have two police officers who saw what was happening in this young man's life and went above and beyond the call of duty to make sure that he was taken care of, that he had mentorship and love and support at a time when he desperately needed it most. And then, which I've never heard of before, helped him apply for school and then made sure not only that he got to school by driving him there, but made sure that he had the resources that he needed to be successful. That's a remarkable story. And too often, as you've heard from members of this body, our officers are vilified. They're painted with one broad brush. But I know and you know that every single day, there are officers across the city in every district, every unit, every watch, who are doing these kinds of acts of kindness, going above and beyond, connecting with people in the community and showing their true humanity. So I want to thank you for being a shining example of what our officers actually are. And I join the call of Alderman Talia Farrell and Alderman Spazato to say, media, please tell that story. Because these are stories that are happening every single day across our city. Our officers are heroes. And importantly, they're our neighbors. They're our brothers, they're sisters, they're fathers, they're mothers. And they need to be treated with the respect that they deserve for running towards danger to protect us. So officers, thank you so much on behalf of a grateful city and on behalf of Omarian. And I also want to talk about the principals. Principals has been on the front lines for the last couple of years. They never left their buildings when we went to remote learning. Because they had to make sure that teachers were supported, that the cafeteria workers, the janitors, the security officers, that the buildings were ready were when students came back. So Principal Escamilla, I just want to say, thank you, sir, for doing what you're doing, for making sure that your school is strong and standing up in the face of very, very difficult circumstances. Our principals across the system at the elementary school level and the high school level deserve our thanks for everything that they've done to make sure that our students were still able to be, to learn, to be nurtured and fed in a safe and welcoming environment. So it is like a parable where we see all the parts of the goodness of the world coming together. Bless you. Happy holidays and thank you for your service. Thank you. This is Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move passage of this resolution in the omnibus.
There are no objections, so ordered.
I now move a return to the regular order of business.
There are no objections, so ordered. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, is Communications. Madam Clerk.
Reports and communications from the mayor, communications from our honor, the mayor to the honorable, the city council of the city of Chicago. to the Honorable, the City Council of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a TIF redevelopment agreement with M-Hub for the renovation of the property located at 240 North Ashland Avenue. Favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the Sixth Amendment to the Bronzeville TIF redevelopment project and plan. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the First Amendment to the Madden and Wells TIF redevelopment project and plan. Your favorable consideration, these ordinances will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the Third Amendment to the 43rd and Cottage Grove TIF redevelopment project and plan. Your favorable consideration of this ordinances will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amendment to the Administrative Service Agreement with Summer Corps. Favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for the Incoentra Square Affordable Housing Development. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for the C40 Garfield Green Affordable Housing Development. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here with a Fund 925 Amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a Class 6 Tax Incentive Status for property located at 4837 South Kedzie Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Chicago Commission on Human Relations, I transmit here with, together with Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, Ramirez Rosa, Martin Hadden, an ordinance amending municipal code regarding bodily autonomy protections. Your favorable consideration of this will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with resolution supporting the human rights movement in Iran. Iran, your favorable consideration of this recent resolution be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property located at 4232 South Wells Street, under the adjacent neighbors land acquisition program. Favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance correcting the bidder's address for the sale of city-owned property under the adjacent neighbors land acquisition program. Favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Assets Information Services, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement, Cumberland Acquisition LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection, I transmit here with an ordinance amending the municipal code regarding the licensing of urban farms and community gardens. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transfer with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Regional Transportation Authority regarding the Kimball Station Area Curb Management and Mobility Plan. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance correcting a measurement error of a zoning map amendment ordinance. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I reappointed Charles K. Newsom as a member of a special service area number 61, the Hyde Park Commission, for a term effective immediately and expiring January 15, 2025. Your favorable consideration of this amendment will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the Urban Forestry Advisory Board. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the Chicago Plan Commission. Favorable consideration of these appointments be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I have designated Brian H. Sanchez as the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals concurrent with his current term and his member effective immediately. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council that the following document was filed in my office, amended redline and extension tax increment financing redevelopment plan and project. I City Clerk Valencia also informed the City Council that all those matters were considered by the City Council at a regular meeting held on November 16, which required by state statute to be published in Booker pamphlet form or one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on December 14, 2022 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings of the City Council of Chicago. I City Clerk Valencia also informed the City Council that the ordinance is authorizing imposition of tax levies, approval of year 2023 budget, and execution of service provider agreements for special service areas numbers 4, 5, 7, 16, 18, 19, 21-20, 16, 25, 26, 31, 32, 34, 38, 43, 44, 45, 51, 54, 55, 66, 61, 64, 69, 71, 75, and 79 through pass from City Council November 16, 2022. Answer requested to be published in special pamphlet, were published in special pamphlet form on December 8, 2022. I City Clerk Valencia also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications reports requiring City Council action, studying reclassification of particular areas referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, claims against the City of Chicago, which referred to Committee on Finance, correction of September 21, 2022, City Council Journal Proceedings, which referred to Committee on Committees and Roles. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications to the mayor and other city officers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, committee reports. Chairman Wegasback, the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met on December 12, 2022, item one is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the designation of municipal depositories of the City of Chicago and Chicago Board of Education. If there's no one wishing to speak on this item, I move to concur with the committee's favorable recommendation by a roll call vote.
And I'm clerk.
The voting is now open. Please refresh.
Just got to roll out.
I will now take a voice vote. If those who have not voted, hit refresh and hit submit. Alderman Mitchell, did you vote? It didn't come through. Oh, there it is. Alderman Abarka will take a voice vote today. Alderman Abarka is a yes. Alderman Coleman, Alderman Coleman is a yes. Alderman Curtis.
It should be on there, yeah.
Alderman Curtis is a yes. Alderman Sito Lopez. Alderman Knutson, not in his chair. Okay, the voting is now closed.
Forty-six, the nays are zero. Alderman Kappelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The nays have it, the motion for reconsideration is defeated. Chairman Wegasback, back to you.
Madam President, I'm going to go out of order on my report and skip over to item number 12, in order to accommodate everyone and make sure everybody's able to speak to this if they wish. But item 12 is a communication recommending the proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute the designation of the transit facility improvement area for the implementation of the Red Line Extension Project. The item did receive favorable approval in the committee with the exception of one vote, no vote. And I would like to open the floor for people to speak on this before I move passage by the roll, before I move passage.
The chair recognizes Alderwoman now, Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise for this, for the 10 to 12 years that Alderman Beal and myself and others have worked tirelessly for the Red Line Extension. Not for anything for us, for self-gratification, but for the people that we represent on the far south side. I've stood here many years and say that we are the city limits. There's no place else to go but to Riverdale when you get out to the far south side, Blue Island and Alset. But to hinder the individuals that we represent on the far south side from any opportunities that the north side, the central side of Chicago is unfair. Now that we have an opportunity to open the doors for those that live that far south, when you talk about 134th, that's quite a distance that you have to take so many changes in order to get to your destination. So I'm going to shortly limit my speech. I don't want to run out of oxygen. But to ask you, just consider those where now we have one less ward on the far south side, where I had to give up my ward because of the less numbers and people on the, on the far south side. But for you that have had years of opportunities, allow us to have those opportunities as well. So I'm asking my colleagues to please support this endeavor that Alderman Beal and I have fought for, for I know me, for 12 years and more. Thank you, Madam President.
You, Alderwoman Austin. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to ask my colleagues to support this Red Line TIF. I think it's very important that everyone knows that this was a promise to our community over 40 something years ago, almost 50. And I remember as a kid growing up, talking about the Red Line Extension. That was the buzz throughout the entire community that people were saying, where are we, when are we going to get ours? When are we going to get the promise that is being fulfilled to our community? And like Alderman Austin stated, we fought to get this going years ago under Mayor Daley, and then Mayor Emanuel kept the ball rolling. And I'm glad that, Mayor, you saw fit to create this TIF to continue the momentum of this Red Line Extension. Our community has been disinvested, disenfranchised, and disconnected from this city for a very long time, for a very long time. And so now to be in phase five or phase seven of the federal process to get to construction, the next phase is engineering and design, and then the last phase is construction. And so it's very important that you all understand that our community has been disconnected, and we're looking forward to getting this connection some 50 years later. And I'm just hoping that I'm around long enough to see it. And, you know, it's just, it's really, really disheartening that we are even talking about this today, that we're talking about the fact that certain communities don't get the same access from CTA as other communities. And so this is another opportunity for everybody to right the wrong, to turn the ship around and put it in the right direction to make sure our community gets their fair share. And so I implore everybody to look deep into your heart and understand that this is important to our community, that it's important to the city, and it's important that we finally fulfill the promise that was made over 50 years ago. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Beal. The chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand in support of this, this Red Line Extension TIF. We need to do more investments in public transportation because if we're going to be a world-class city, we got to make sure that all communities are connected. When you take a look at other countries and their public transportation, we're way behind, way behind. But we got to make these investments. I want to make sure that CTA with these funds are incorporating as many communities as possible. We heard that the veteran businesses will get an opportunity. But I want to make sure that CTA is also advocating to the FRA and FHWA that there needs to be more people from the community where this project is going to impact, participating on this project, not the bare minimum of 25 and 5 or 26 and 6. Remember, this is a program that's going to be with disadvantaged business enterprise, which means that your typical MWBE won't participate. CTA has got to be creative and challenge the FRA and FHWA to make sure that everyone is participating on this project. This is a mega project. One, almost $3 billion worth of constructions is going to be occurring. Three billion. We got to make sure that there's apprenticeships that are participating on this to the maximum. So again, I support this project. We need to do more investment in public transportation. But again, we want to make sure that every community is participating. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Viegas. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Abarka.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise in support of this because I rode the orange line today to City Hall and because it's one of the few ways that I can get here downtown because I really don't prefer to actually drive. And the communities in this area don't have that option. They don't have the option to access the rest of our city. And so it is an issue of equity and fairness. And really, our infrastructure, our public transit is the backbone and skeleton of our city. And so I would urge others to vote yes as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. On the head of the members of the body that wish to speak to this matter, the chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
What? I mean, I've done anything. What, what, what? Here's the reality here. To have a portion of our city disconnected from everybody else from rail transit, I think has been a travesty since the system has been put up. I do believe that this is the right move. I know that some of us may object to how it's being financed. But we have to also remember that as a city, this is best for all of Chicago. There are times where funds come from one community to help another. And there's nothing wrong with that because at the end of the day, as former CPS Chair Michael Scott would always tell us, a rising tide lifts all boats. And this is an opportunity to lift a community, a group of communities on the far south side, which will help lift us all, connecting individuals to jobs that may be on the other side of town. Imagine, one person says she takes her two hours to take a bus to another bus, to a train, to another bus, just to go to school. That should not be in a world-class city such as ours. So today, I hope that we all can find it in our hearts to pass the revenue so that this can happen for those residents that live in Alt Gill Gardens that are literally, I won't say trapped, but transit star from the rest of the city of Chicago. I also talked about how the blue line and the red line and other pieces of our transportation system need to be upkept. But again, we as a city have to work together. As we, as I recall, the meeting I brought my daughter to because I didn't have a babysitter, she was still in a carriage, to pass the money for the red, the purple line on the north side. And I hope that we take that same vigor and energy to help the transit star of communities south of 95th Street on the red line. And again, as Alderman Abarka stated, this is an issue of equity. It is not equal when a part of our city does not have the same access that the rest of us do. Even though we're on the west side of Chicago, we would be wrong not to support helping our brothers and sisters on the far south side. helping our brothers and sisters on the far south side get the, get the transit opportunities that they deserve. And I would like to definitely stand in support. It's okay today, Alderman Beal and I, we have disagreements, but today we on the same page as far as trying to help residents in this city gain access to what they need, just like the rest of Chicago. So I stand in support with him and Alderman Kerry Austin on this endeavor to expand the access of transit to the residents of the far south side of our city. And I would ask that everyone else do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam President. I also like to stand in support of this. You know, for me, this is a situation of social justice. You know, if some of us don't recognize, when they first started putting the trains in in the city of Chicago, they stopped in certain areas for certain reasons, and they also took out stops in certain areas for certain reasons. If you look at all of the public housing around the city of Chicago, in the middle of the public housing areas, you can't get to the train from a mile away. They took out those stops purposely to stop black folks from getting on the trains with other people and make other folks feel safe, but limiting the other people from having the opportunity to get jobs and resources. I want to thank the mayor and everyone else that have been involved for allowing me to get a train stop over on Damon and Lake. I'm trying to get one over in Cabrini-Green on Division and Orleans because there's not a train stop between Chicago Avenue and North Avenue. You want people to work, you want to make it mandatory that they work, but you don't want to get them no transportation to go to work. That's crazy. Now we're talking about the south side, and we're talking about money coming from different communities. Let me say this. More money come from my area than any other area in the city of Chicago to help everyone else's area. And we allow that to happen because we're all in this together. The reason why some folks are going to other communities, because we neglect their community. If you neglect their community, guess what? They're going to keep coming to your community. But if you fulfill opportunities for them to get ahead in their neighborhood, they don't even have to come to your neighborhood because they have all of the amenities and resources in their neighborhood where they don't even have to go downtown or go anywhere else to be able to have a good time and feel safe or whatever the case may be. You know, so we need, in order for this city to get ahead, in order for this city to stabilize, in order for this city to be able to be safer, we have to give everyone all around this city opportunities so they can recognize that they are all a part of this city. So I support this 100%. Thank you.
Well said, well said. Thank you, Alderman Burnett. The chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to everyone who spoke, especially our colleague Alderman Burnett. I think we know historically, there's a reason why transportation is such a problem. We shouldn't live in a world-class city where there are transportation deserts. That should not be allowed to exist. And we know that it does because in the inception and creation of the city, it was intentional to segregate it. So to be able, and I'd like to add my voice as a north side voice, that we continue to build upon that. We know that when people who want to develop and create housing, they come and look at the north side because they go, there's public transportation, there's ways for people to get to their jobs, and there's not enough creation of that housing on the south and west sides because the infrastructure is not there when it comes to public transportation. And so I'm in full support as well. As someone who earlier this year was calling for President Carter from CTA to come speak and writing resolutions, well, ordinance to try to make sure there was accountability in place, I also want to commend you, Mayor, for putting forth the executive order requiring quarterly hearings from CTA and everyone else because it's not that any of us want to impede any of the progress, but we do want accountability that we know if the funds are there, that the work is also there. And so to be able to check in with them as things move forward is something we're in full support of. We want to make sure, I'll disagree slightly with my colleague, Mr. Burnett. We want folks to come from the south, from south up north. We want folks from the north side to go south. We want people to travel all around the city to understand all the beautiful neighborhoods and communities that we have here. And you don't get that to happen without the proper transportation to do so. So I'll be proud to vote in support of this and ask our colleagues to do the same. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Vasquez. The chair recognizes Alderman Wispada.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I will also be brief, but I feel like we could use more than one north side voice on the matter and to stand in support because I, I know from the day I first set foot, had an address in the city, I have never lived less than a half mile from a CTA station. You know, I think that is true for most people who live on the north side of the city. The notion that we've got folks, 130th, who live four miles, easy. No one would accept that, and yet that's been the acceptable reality for nigh on 50 years in this city, more than that. So I'm glad for this conversation. I'm glad for the ordinance. My colleague Alderman Irvin said earlier that folks have said that a rising tide lifts all ships. And I wish, I wish that was always true because I feel like a rising tide in Chicago has traditionally left half our communities drowning. So that's what we're changing today. We've got a tide of equity moving through the city today, and that's what we get to vote on and hopefully see a better reality for a lot of folks who have been really left out. And we sometimes say for certain reasons, and I'm glad also we called out what those for certain reasons really are and that we're addressing that today too. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Wispada. The chair recognizes Alderman Siccho Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, if I can be recognized as a yes vote on the first item on the Finance Committee, I had to step out for, for a minute. And also I'd like to rise in support of this critical, this critical investment for the south side. And I think some of our colleagues have mentioned, when we vote in favor of public infrastructure for the north side, I think that we have the same responsibility to amend the wrongs that have been historic in the city of Chicago. And this is an opportunity to do just that. There is indeed many issues of equity. I, I hear some of the concerns that have been brought up, especially when it comes to the use of Tiff money. However, I think the public transportation, when it comes to the south side, especially in a time like this, for workers to be able to come to the city, for us to continue to generate employment across the city of Chicago, this is a fundamental state forward. I hear the issue of funding. The federal government had fronted, I believe, $2.1 billion. And of course, the responsibility to match those funds. I think the city of Chicago definitely must also urge the state of Illinois to help us to bring more resources in the line. I agree with that. We also got to talk about how we help those small homeowners who are struggling right now with property taxes. We hear that. That's what we today, and I talked to Chairman Wagisback to discuss a hearing so that we can address the issue right now in property. Taxes are hitting really hard, especially the Latinx community. We got to discuss better ways to address that. We are proposing perhaps reinstated the Office of Tax Protection so that we can discuss inequities within our property tax system. That is indeed something that we also want to collaborate with Corporation Council so that we can go to the state of Illinois with an agenda of how we can match these funds, we can bring more revenue to the city of Chicago. But we cannot vote down this kind of projects on the sake of, especially when we bring up issues of equity. So I would like to work with administration on how we can discuss the issue of property taxes. Tiff funding should be funding this kind of projects. We need to be, create public infrastructure in areas of need in the city of Chicago. And we also must discuss how we address the inequities within our property tax system. And we must discuss this with the state of Illinois. So I'm rising support of this project. I look forward to working with our colleagues and city council on how we discuss this use of Tiff dollars to address the inequities, not only for public infrastructure, but also to property taxes, for property taxes that are hitting really hard for Latinx community. I do think that we can do both. And again, I rise in support of this project, and I urge your colleagues to address inequities in the city of Chicago. And let's do it today. This is a good opportunity. Thank you again.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Tony.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to dovetail a little bit on Alderman Siccho Lopez's comments about diverse funding sources. As one who was on the council when President Obama signed the federal funding for the red-purple line, there was no such thing as a rail Tiff. Normally, these projects are 50% plus federal, 25% state, and then 25% local match. And we did not have a state budget during that period. The state did give us an opportunity to establish the rail Tiff, which this actually happened. Now we're again on the south extension, which I'm 100% for. But as Alderman Siccho Lopez says, we, this is a region economic boost. This is not just the city of Chicago. And the county seems to be lost on this. I don't know, you know, where their fund, their economic development funds are, and the state, we, you know, they just, you know, in my opinion, they passed the buck to the, the Tiff and the local property taxes. So I think we need to do more. When asked about this during the hearing, we're working on it. We're talking. You know, the old saying around politics is talk is cheap. We need to make sure they're at the table, both the county and the state, to help in this expansion. Because you know what? Hopefully, I think the red-purple line is in budget, but God knows what happens over the next 10, 15 years with inflation, the way it goes. We need partners at the county and the state to make this a regional economic engine. But I am totally in support of it. Thank you.
Tony, the chair recognizes Alderman Knudsen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'd like to be recognized as a yes vote on the first item on the Finance Committee. I'll keep this, this short. I'm, I'm super in favor of the Red Line Extension. I think it's, it's a historic move for the city that also helps assist other ordinances that we pass, like the Connected Communities Ordinance. It's going to add equity to the city. It's going to add a dynamic of affordability, and it helps modernize us as we, as we work going forward. Taking advantage of this federal funding is an incredible source for the city right now. And I just think it's great. So that's all. I'll be a yes vote.
Thank you. Chairman Wagisback, back to you.
Madam President, I'd just like to say a few words to Alderman Beal. Hold on to your venture card. So you can ride it instead of just seeing it. And then Alderman Irvin, if you guys remember, Alderman Irvin's daughter slept through that whole meeting, which I couldn't believe, but that's how, that's how great the discussion was. But I'd like to make note about what this is about. It's about fairness and equity. President Carter talked a little bit about it in his brief comments during the committee meeting. And the people that presented, Leah Mooney from CTA, Tim Jefferies from DPD, did a fantastic job working with us to move this ahead, to present the issues for everyone that hasn't been living it over the last few decades. I'd like to read a quick quote from somebody that I think kind of encompasses what everyone's been saying here, and that's Cheryl Johnson. And I've had this in my file for quite a while. She lives in Alkell Gardens, and she said, "If the city moves on the Red Line Extension, what a great benefit it would be for this area. We could go all the way from the Riverdale community area all the way to Loyola, to Howard, to Rogers Park. One stop, straight. How convenient would that be for opportunities and accessibility to other opportunities?" And that's a huge issue for this area. And I think she, she does encompass what everybody has been working on for so many decades. And again, overall, this is about fairness and equity. So I'm glad to see this administration has moved this forward with the city council. And I hope to make sure that we can continue that work as we, as we vote, not just on these items, but to move this process forward in a, in a reasonable and timely fashion so that those people that live on the south side can enjoy what the rest of us do every day. So with that, Madam President, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception of Alderwoman Dowell wishing to be recorded as no.
With that exception, in hearing no further objection, so ordered.
All right. Madam President, we had five items on this Red Line Tiff. The second one is item number 13. This is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute the approval of the redevelopment plan for the Red Line Extension Redevelopment Project Area. The item received favorable approval by the committee with the exception of Alderwoman Dowell. If there's no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, and with the one objection noted, so ordered.
Item 14 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute the designation of the Red Line Extension Redevelopment Project Area as Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Project Area. The item received favorable approval by the committee with the exception of Alderwoman Dowell. If there's no one wishing to speak on this, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
One objection noted, no further objections being heard, so ordered.
Item 15 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance to enter into and execute the adoption of the Tax Increment Allocation Financing Funds Project Costs within the Red Line Extension Project. This item received favorable approval with the exception of Alderwoman Dowell in the committee. I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
With the one objection noted, no others, so ordered.
Item 16 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental development agreement with the Chicago Transit Authority for use of tax increment financing funds for the Red Line Expansion Project in the amount of $959 million. The item received favorable approval by the committee with the exception of Alderwoman Dowell. So I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception of Alderwoman Dowell voting no.
With the objection and exception noted, hearing no further objection, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. All right, ladies and gentlemen, moving back to item number two.
Wagisback, if I may? I just want to say congratulations to the far south side. It's a long, long, long time. It's absolutely needed. It gives us the opportunity to take advantage of historic federal dollars. I want to say thank you to the Biden administration for recognizing that there are these big mega projects that need federal funding, and this is one of them. And I look forward to ribbon cutting, groundbreaking, whatever comes next. But I also want to say a special thank you and shout out to the folks in Alkell Gardens who have been disconnected and cut off, as Alderman Beal has said, for far too long. Thank you.
All right, Madam President, moving to item number two, or back to item two. This is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District to provide tax increment financing funds for the construction of a park with the new Park District Headquarters facility, a fieldhouse, multipurpose community rooms, outdoor sport and play site amenities at 4800 South Western Avenue in the 14th Ward in the amount of $10 million. Unless there's someone that wishes to speak on this item, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Madam President, item three is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement with Chicago Cooperative DBA Chicago Market, a community co-op leased tenant with Chicago Transit Authority for tax increment financing funds for the rehabilitation and operation of the historic Gerber Building at 4620 North Broadway as a full-service grocery store in the 46th Ward in the amount of $5.8 million. I believe Alderman Kappelman wishes to make a statement, but I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider. And in the committee, this received favorable approval with the exception of, I believe, Alderman Lopez and more.
The chair recognizes Alderman Kappelman.
Thank you, Madam President. At one point in time, the census tract where this business is located was in the 95th percentile for violent arrests. So I wholeheartedly support this project. And because of that, I do have a financial interest. And because of that, I do have a financial interest. So I will abstain under Rule 14.
Thank you, Alderman Kapelman.
Thank you, Madam President.
Any other members wish to speak to this? There's a motion. Hearing no further objection, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. Item four is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement with 4300 Roosevelt LLC and Provision of Tax Increment Financing Funds for assistance in the construction of facilities and a parking area at 4300 West Roosevelt Road and 4301 West Fifth Avenue in the 24th Ward in the amount of $8 million. Unless someone wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Madam President, item five is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute the issuance and transfer of tax increment financing funds to augment the Metro realignment and 15th Street components overseen by the Chicago Department of Transportation for University of Illinois Discovery Partners Institute project at 1501 South Well Street in the 3rd Ward in the amount of $85 million. Unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item six is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the waiver of fees for the Chicago Board of Education and its contractors for ongoing improvements on buildings and facilities operated for public and/or governmental use. Unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Madam President, item seven is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide tax increment financing funds for land acquisition from the Chicago Housing Authority and construction of the new near-south high school at 2450 South State Street in the 3rd Ward in the amount of $8 million. Unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception of Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez, who would like to be recorded as voting no.
The chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Hold on, Chairman, I may be off base. What item was this one?
Seven.
Item seven?
It's.
Oh, yeah, near-south high school.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. So in committee, this was the one that I voted no on. And the reason why I voted no, as people know, I worked at the Chicago Housing Authority, and I worked with the ICKYs Development and the residents there. And it's always important for me to make sure that the residents have a voice always in this matter. That was my commitment to them when we started to plan for transformation. And that's my commitment today. Although I believe that CHA has a responsibility to rethink the plan for transformation and do even more units, the LAC and the CAC are in support of this. They've provided both letters from both the Central Advisory Council and from the LAC representative at ICKYs home. As a matter of fact, the LAC president I worked with from 99 to 2008 passed on. But her daughter is that LAC president now or representative, and she provided a letter. And from the Central Advisory Council, they support the new school coming to 24th and State Street, Harold ICKY South Bridgeland, so long as the remaining CHA public housing units are being built on the footprints of Harold ICKY South Bridge on site, not up the street, down the street, or around the corner. That's what they wrote. So since they supported it, and, and, and that commitment is made to them, then I stand in support of this witness as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. And I can assure you that there was extensive engagement of the legacy ICKYs resident by the CHA over many, many months. There were tours that were done of the location, both for the school and the alternative site. So I think that is the basis for the support that you referenced from the two letters. Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Barton. Did you raise your hand? Yes.
I'd like to be recorded as voting no. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Alder, let me go here first, I'll, I'll call you last. Alderman Taylor.
I'd like to be recorded as a no.
Chair recognizes Alderman Vascas.
I'd also like to be recorded as a no.
Chair recognizes Alderman C. Lopez.
I'd also like to be recorded as a no.
All right. Any other folks before I call on Alderwoman Lee? The chair recognizes Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. And to all of my colleagues, I rise in total support of this item. I've been a lifelong resident of Chinatown Bridgeport. And students my age, and actually, let me tell you about my father. My father went to Lindblum High School from Chinatown. For decades, yep, hey. Students from this area have not had a viable neighborhood option for many, many years. Students today who are in the area that will be served by this neighborhood open enrollment high school travel sometimes up to 90 minutes in each direction, costing them really valuable time to be involved with extracurricular activities, to do homework. And this is a long time coming, and I'm proud to be associated with it. I know that it did not come without a lot of hard work and engagement. And I was part of that engagement. And I think this is going to be a wonderful addition to our area. It will also help to tear down these barriers that we have with the Dan Ryan as well. People cross that all the time, and it no longer needs to be a barrier. And it's going to bring our two communities, our three communities, all of our communities together, because this is going to serve the near-south region, which is made up of the South Loop, Chinatown, Bridgeport. We have so many opportunities to have our young people, especially, learn to be together and relate to each other as human beings. I know firsthand the value of that. When my parents sent me to public school, and it was life-changing to be able to have that ability. And I want that for the students in our communities. And I want them to be able to do that in an open enrollment neighborhood high school. So thank you for your leadership on this. Thank you, Alderwoman Dowell, for your leadership as well.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Dowell.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to also express my thanks to Alderman Lee for her camaraderie and partnership on this important institutional, educational opportunity that we're going to put in the South Loop. This is not just a school for Chinatown. It is a school that will serve residents of the South Loop, residents of Bronze Douglas, and also residents of Bridgeport. These, these are communities that have been growing over time. The population explosion is huge, and we have over 2,000 high school students that now attend over 100 different high schools. They have to travel outside of their communities when they should be able to go to school in their area. I too, like you, Alderman Lee, went to a very diverse high school. It was an experience for me coming from the community that I came from. And I think that all children should be educated in that kind of environment where they can learn about different cultures, understand different perspectives and history. It bodes well for how you grow up and become an adult. So I was getting ready to call you Alderman. Mayor Lightfoot, I want to thank you for your support on this. I also want to thank CPS and the Chicago Housing Authority. I think it's important, and Alderman Moore has raised this issue. We are going to walk, watch out for those residents at CHA. The commitment is to turn back 244 units. That commitment goes back to 2011, unfortunately. But we're going to do that, and we're well on our way. By the end of next year, we'll have over 40% of those units built. And the commitment, as long as I'm sitting in this seat, is to make sure that those CHA residents are, those promises are honored by the CHA. So I make that commitment to you. I'm all in on this high school. The only reason I'm running for reelection is because I want to do that school in addition to some other things that I want to see happen in the ward. But I ask for all, I understand the concerns of some of my colleagues here, but this is the right thing to do. And come hell or high water, we're going to see it to the end. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Very much, Madam President. So I'd like to also rise as supporter of this high school. And I'd like to commend Alderman Lee for, you know, coming out, coming out of the gate early, fast, and getting the pulse of the community, getting to understand what the neighborhood needs, what the neighborhood wants, and how they feel about it. And I know that you did your due diligence on all sides of the issue, from what you've been hearing from the outside. And a lot of times, people from the outside don't really understand what's going on on the inside. You know, coincidentally, I have a, I have an issue coming up, a vote coming up for some TIF dollars and some other things to go toward some property in Cabrini-Green, Holstein Development. Holstein had a plan to build a certain amount of units for returning residents for Cabrini-Green to come back on that property. And he had a certain amount of numbers to build. Well, the economy changed, things changed. Some of those things changed from, from townhomes to multifamily units. He made his numbers. Because he made his numbers, now he don't need to build on all the property anymore because he made his numbers. So now we have two extra lots that he is not going to build on. And that, you know, CHA and the community, we're going to do something different with it. But the thing is, and what I'm trying to say is, with some of these developments for the returning residents and public housing, there was a commitment for a certain amount of numbers. Initially, when they did these things, they had a plan to do a certain amount of square footage on all these properties. But those things evolved and changed because of banking and the economy and a whole bunch of other things that, that emerged. And some of the buildings got a little larger, got bigger. And now they have all this land left. And at the same time, when you put a new school in a community, it brings up the value in the whole area, right? A new school is an economic development engine in a community. That's why at one time, I was trying to get the Obama High School over in my area, not just to have the Obama High School, but I was trying to get the Obama High School to complement the public housing and the redevelopment of mixed-income housing that was in that area to attract the market rate people to live in mixed-income areas with everyone else. And it was going to help that whole project. So I understand how important this high school is for your community. I know from the outside, we look at it different. But from the inside, there's a plan, and there's a reason. And it's a re, and the reason is, is to help the community and help these developments continue to grow. And it will, it will, it will help the redevelopment of the rest of the CHA property to go faster, especially now because taxes are going up and everything else is going up. But it will help to attract more money for those developments to continue to happen. So that's the bigger picture. So I just wanted to say that, and I support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. Any other members of the body that wish to speak to this moment? Chairman Wiegas, back, back to you.
Madam President, and I apologize, Alderman Moore. I had a note there that you did vote no. You were waiting for the LAC letter, and I apologize for missing that. So, Madam President, just renew my motion to move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with those exceptions.
Hearing no objection, and with those exceptions noted.
Item eight is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute the Second Amendment to the Kinsey Industrial Conservation Redevelopment Project regarding project completion dates and retirement of tax increment financing fund debt obligations. If there's no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item nine is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute the approval of the Third Amendment to the Pulaski Corridor Tax Increment Financing Funds project and plan. If there's no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item 10 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute the designation of the Third Amendment expanding the Pulaski Corridor Tax Increment Financing redevelopment area. If there's no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item 11 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute the adoption of the Third Amendment to the expanded Pulaski Corridor Tax Increment Financing Fund redevelopment area. If no one wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Moving on to item 17. Item 17 is the report of cases in which judgments or settlements were entered into for the month of November 2022, which will be placed on file with the clerk. Items 18 and 19 consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city and denial of, of payment of various small claims against the city. If there's no objection, I ask that these items be placed in the omnibus.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item 20 consists of authorizations for the issuance of charitable solicitation, tag day permits for the American Civil Liberties Union for January 1st through March 31st, 2023. If there's no objection, I ask that this item be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
And item 21 consists of three orders authorizing the Corporation Council to enter into and execute three settlements. Item 21A is in the case of Jake Soprich versus City of Chicago at All, number 19L 2099, in the amount of $600,000. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item 21B is in the case of Alberta Wilson, individually and as parent of Roy Smart, Royal Smart, Royalty Smart Minors versus City of Chicago, number 19L 8047, in the amount of $350,000. The item received favorable approval by the committee, with the exception of Alderman Lopez wishing to be recorded as voting no. Unless someone wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Did you wish to speak, sir? The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning. Good, oh, excuse me, good afternoon, members of the City Council. This is a story like the next item that we are very familiar with, where we are paying to known gang members or their families because they feel that they've been victimized by us. This is outrageous to be here yet again doing this. This body, this city, must come up with a better standard for what we're going to do with the hundreds of thousands of millions of dollars that we give away to individuals who terrorize our communities, who make victims everywhere they go. This has to stop. And if that means that we have to put this money aside, not for them, but for victims, let's pursue that. Let's not continue to enrich those individuals who have no regard, no remorse, and no compassion for their communities. I, for one, stand in opposition, not only to this item, but to the next. And I ask my colleagues to do the same. And I would ask for this item and the next to be roll call votes, please.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. And Chairman Wiegas, Max, you just want to give some context to make sure people know that they're, what they're voting on.
I'm, I'm sorry, Madam President, I couldn't hear you.
Would you please give a little context so that people know what they're voting on?
Sure. So item B in Alberta Wilson, on behalf of her minor children versus City of Chicago, involve the execution of a search warrant for firearms belonging to Denaki Mitterhoff at the plaintiff's residence at Miss. at the plaintiff's residence, at Ms. Wilson's residence. That person, the children were present when that search warrant took place. No firearms were found there. And the case involved the plaintiff indicating that firearms from the police officers were pointed at the children and that the search warrant had failed to go through with what its intent was. So there was no gang banger or gang person here. This was about the children having weapons pointed at them.
Am I correct that a seven-year-old was handcuffed outside in rain?
The children were nine, eight, and six, and the handcuffed child was eight years old.
Thank you.
Right. No, no weapons were found, Madam Chairman, for purposes of facts on the case.
Madam Clerk, please open up the e-voting.
Thanks, Ariel.
The voting is now opened. Please hit refresh and submit your vote. Your voice vote, yeah. Alderman Abarkah? Alderman Abarkah is a yes. Alderman Burke? Okay, Alderman Burke, yeah, you want to take a voice vote? Alderman Burke is no. We'll get you some support there. Alderman Coleman? Alderman Coleman is a yes. Alderman Taylor? Alderman Taylor is a yes. Alderman Austin? Not seated, she's not here. Alderman Gardner? Oh, it came through. Alderman Kapelman? Alderman Kapelman is a yes. Alderman Silverstein? Alderman Silverstein is a yes. Any more I missed? Okay. The voting is now closed.
The yeas are 39, the nays are eight. Alderman Kapelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. The noes, the nays have it. The motion for consideration fails. Chairman Wegas, back.
Thank you, Madam President.
There's a call, a roll, for a roll call vote on the next item as well. And once again, I would ask that you provide a little context for your vote.
Item 21C is in the case of Manuel Barosio versus Chicago Police Officers and the City of Chicago, number 19CV 8105, and the amount of $250,000. The plaintiff, Barosio, and three others were arrested and charged with attempted first-degree murder in connection with the shooting incident that occurred in April of 2017. Officer Hernandez was in the immediate area, and his observations were, provided the key evidence that linked the plaintiff, Mr. Barosio, to the crime. However, it was discovered during the criminal prosecution that plaintiff was not involved in the shooting. Rather, he was a member of a rival gang who did run away and take cover nearby. He spent two months in jail when the charges against him were dismissed. And it was various contradictory statements and false reports that were written that led to the city basically recommending the settlement and the amount of $250,000. So the item did receive favorable approval by the committee with the exception of Alderman Lopez wishing to be recorded no. And with that, I would ask for a roll call vote as requested.
Brush your device and hit submit. The voting is now open.
Luanda? See what the device, please raise your hand.
Alderman Abarkah?
I've.
Alderman Abarkah is a yes. Alderman Curtis?
Yes.
Alderman Curtis is a yes. Alderman Maldonado? You voted yes or didn't come through? Alderman Maldonado is a yes. Alderman Austin, not in her seat. Alderman Mitz? Not here. All voting that is wished. Okay, the voting is now closed.
All right, the yeas are 41, the nays are five. Alderman Kapelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Wegas, back.
Madam President, that concludes the report of the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, sir. Next up, the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Chairman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which held a committee meeting on December 1st and 7th, and a subcommittee meeting on December 7th. This committee recommends passage of the following items. Item number one, an ordinance from the trans- concerning the transfer of funds within the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations for year 2020. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two, an ordinance from concerning the transfer of funds within the committee on the committee and and within the Committee on Committees and Rules for the year 2022. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motions to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three, a substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to the Annual Appropriation Ordinance year 2022 within Fund Number 925 for the Department of Family and Support Services. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The Committee on the Budget and Government Operations held a subject matter hearing on December 1st and discussed the Foreign Fire Insurance Board expenditures and the third quarter report on the fiscal year 2022 annual appropriation. No votes were taken. And finally, the Subcommittee on the Chicago Recovery Plan also met on December 7th and discussed environmental justice initiatives and community climate initiatives. No votes were taken, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Dow. Next up, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Chairman Vegas.
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Tuesday, December 6, 2022, the committee held an in-person meeting and recommends passage of the following items. Items one and two are appointments to one special service area collectively voted on by the committee members and introduced by Mayor Lightfoot during November 16, 2022 City Council meeting. Appointments of Yvette Leon, Lexei Galeas, to SSA number 13, Stockyards Commission located in the 3rd, 11th, 12th, and 20th wards. I move for passage of these appointments by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Before reporting on the following items, I would be remiss if I did not highlight the success of our annual special service area hearings in the overall budget process. A big thank you to the attentive and collaborative partnership with the Department of Planning and Development, specifically Mark Rocha and Mary O'Connor. Both went above and beyond and helped us meet critical deadlines to fund special service areas throughout the city, ensuring services encouraging economic development are provided. Items three and 22, items three through 22 on the agenda are a series of ordinances on tax levy, scope of services, budget, and management agreements to various special service areas were collectively voted on by committee members and introduced by Mayor Lightfoot during the October 26, 2022, and November 16, 2022 City Council meetings. SSA number 1-2015, State Street, located in the 4th and 42nd wards. SSA number 8, Lakeview East, located in the 44th and 46th wards. SSA number 17, Central Lakeview, located in the 44th and 46th wards. SSA number 22, Andersonville, located in the 40th, 47th, and 48th wards. SSA number 27, West Lakeview, Lincoln Belmont Ashland, located in the 32nd, 44th, and 47th wards. SSA number 28-2014, Six Corners, located in the 45th ward. SSA number 33, Wicker Park in Bucktown, located in the 1st, 2nd, and 32nd wards. SSA number 42, 71st Street, Stony Island, located in the 5th, 7th, and 8th wards. SSA number 47, 47th Street, in Cottage Grove, located in the 4th ward. SSA number 48, Old Town, located in the 2nd and 27th wards. SSA number 50, Calumet Heights Avalon, located in the 5th and 8th wards. SSA 52-2021, 51st Street, located in the 3rd ward. SSA 72, The Village, Austin-Chicago Cultural Quarter, located in the 28th and 37th wards. SSA 73, Chinatown, located in the 25th ward. SSA 76, North Michigan Avenue, located in the 2nd and 42nd wards. SSA 77, West Garfield Park, located in 28th wards, 28th ward. SSA number 3, 63rd Street, located in the 13th, 16th, 17th, and 23rd wards. SSA number 10, Back of the Yards, located in the 11th, 12th, 15th, and 20th wards. SSA number 13, Stockyards, located in the 3rd, 11th, 12th, and 20th wards. SSA 39, Brighton Park, Archer Heights, located in 12th, 14th, and 15th wards. I move for passage of these ordinances by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Sorry, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items 23 through 29 on the agenda are a series of ordinances on tax levy extensions, enlargements and/or establishments, scope of services, budget, and management agreements to various special service areas, special service areas which were collectively voted on by the committee members introduced by Mayor Lightfoot during November 16, 2022 City Council meeting. SSA number 20, Southwestern Avenue, located in 19th ward. SSA 62, Sawgonash, located in the 39th ward. SSA 63, West Humboldt Park, located in the 27th and 37th wards. SSA 24, Clark Morse Glenwood, located in the 49th ward. SSA 56-2022, Bronzeville, located in the 3rd ward. SSA 59, 2022, 59th Street, located in the 14th, 16th, and 23rd wards. SSA number 80, Inglewood, located in the 16th and 20th wards. I move for passage of these ordinances by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Item 30 is an ordinance in support of a Class 7B tax incentive for property at 3552 West Grand Avenue in the 26th ward, introduced by Mayor Lightfoot during November 16, 2022 City Council meeting. I move for passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Item 31 is the ordinance authorizing the Department of Planning and Development to enter into, enter into an interim service provider agreement with the Belmont Central Chamber of Commerce for SSA 28-2014 until a 2023 service provider is selected through an RFP process and was, and approved by the City Council for direct introduction by the Department of Planning and Development. I move for passage of this item by the same roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Next up, the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Chairman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council, reporting for your committee on housing and real estate, which held a meeting on December 5, 2022. Committee has a series of reports recommending the passage of the following. Item number one is a lease agreement with WELBIC for Chicago 200, 2701 LLC for portion of a warehouse facility, loading dock, offices, employee parking lot at 2315 West 27th Street and 2701 Southwestern Avenue, the 25th Ward. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Item number two is a negotiated sale of vacant city-owned property at 8645 South Yates Boulevard to B Leonard Construction LLC for construction of office space in the 7th Ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection. Item number three is a negotiated sale of city-owned property at 2928 East 89th Street, the Pilsen Little Village Community Mental Health Center, Inc., DBA, Pilsen Wellness Center for operation of a community clinic in the 10th Ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection. Item four is the acceptance of a bid for Morning View World Word Church to purchase city-owned property at 621 East 45th Street under the negotiated sale in the 3rd Ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item five is acceptance of a bid of David D. Flowers, Sr., for purchase of city-owned va- city-owned property at 156 East 111th Street under the adjacent neighbors acquisition program in the 9th Ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item six is city acquisition of improved the vacant parcels or portions of lots commonly known as 518-522 East 47th Street and 526 East 47th Street in the 3rd Ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. Next up, the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Vice Chair Hopkins.
Apologize, Madam President. I rise on behalf of Chairman Mitz, who had to step out to attend to a personal matter to submit the report as vice chairman for your committee on license and consumer protection, which held a meeting on December 12. The following items were passed by committee. Ordinance 22-3470, an ordinance to amend the municipal code designating a portion of the 19th ward as restricted residential zone prohibiting additional shared housing and vacation rentals. I move the City Council concur in the recommendations of the license committee and pass this item by the same roll call vote as number one in the Finance Committee and the same affiliated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Ordinance 22-3031, an ordinance to allow a one-time exception so the Chicago Cubs can hold a Major League Baseball night game at Wrigley Field on the evening of July 14, 2023, in the 44th ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Two ordinances regarding liquor moratoriums in the 8th Ward and the 49th Ward, the first being 22-3651 in the 8th Ward, 22-3454 in the 49th Ward. I move passage of these two items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President, reporting for your committee on pedestrian and traffic safety for which a meeting was held on Thursday, December 8, 2022. Before the committee, there were 63 items. There were 63 routine traffic items that passed and two routine, routine traffic items that did not pass. Madam President, I do have an amendment on page four, Ward 44, to repeal disabled parking, number 98880. For, it says 721 North Aldine Avenue, it should be 721 West Aldine Avenue. If there's no objections, I move for passage of these ordinances in the omnibus. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, the Committee on. Next up, the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation Chairman Spazada.
Thank you, Madam President. You forgot one thing in the happy committee, so.
I didn't want to steal your thunders.
And today, and today is one happy day, let me tell you, so. Happy to report. Reporting on your Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, Recreation, also known as the Happy Committee, which held a meeting on December seventh, twenty-twenty-two, the committee recommends patches of the following items. Two zero two-two dash three seven nine one expenditure of open space impact fee funds to neighbor space for acquisition and development of the property at four-one-three-one dash four-one-four-nine South Grexel Boulevard comprising Kenwood Garden. I move passes of this item by the first most favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item two zero two-two dash three-seven-nine-two expenditure of open space impact fee funds to neighbor space for installation of dedicated water hydrant at Montrose Metro Garden four-four-zero-zero dash four-four-nine-eight North Ravenswood Avenue. I move passes of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two zero two-two dash three-seven-nine-three expenditure of open space impact fee funds to neighbor space for recreational improvements at Pierce Elementary School, one-four-two-three West Brynmar Avenue. I move passes of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Transportation in Public Way Chairman Brookins.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Transportation in Public Way. A committee meeting was held on November tenth, twenty-twenty-two. And December eighth, twenty-twenty-two, the following ordinances were passed by majority of the members present. Page two includes one Merrill ordinance introduced by the mayor's office. Page three and four in include eighteen ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local aldermen from wards one, three, eleven, sixteen, twenty-three, twenty-seven, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-five, forty, and forty-seven through fifty. Page five includes two transportation ordinances located in the seventeenth and fortieth ward. Page six includes one vacation ordinance in the twenty-second ward. Uh, I'll just note that this time there is one item that was not called that will be called for North Fork Southern at the next city council meeting. Uh, I also, before I relinquish the mic, want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. Happy Hanukkah and happy Festivus for Anthony who's not here right now. But we appreciate each and every one of you all, and, uh, hopefully you'll enjoy your holiday. Your Honor, if there's no objection, I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
This is about the vote, Mr. Alderman Vaskas? The chair recognizes Alderman Vaskas.
Just want to make sure to add Kwanzaa. Like your colleague.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I got you.
Well, well, there's a motion and no objection, uh, so ordered.
Thank you. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, uh, the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards Chairman Tony.
Madam President, members of the City Council presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, which held a meeting on November twenty-ninth. We'll have two reports, but the first meeting was on November twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-two. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by majority of the members present. Pages one through thirteen contain various map amendments in the second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, eleventh, twelfth, nineteenth, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-nine, thirty-second, thirty-seventh, fortieth, forty-first, forty-second, forty-third, forty-four, forty-six, and forty-seventh wards. Move passage, uh, by the, I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so, so ordered.
Page thirteen contains various large signs over one hundred square feet in area, twenty-four feet above grade in the second twenty-seven, twenty-eight, forty-second, forty-fourth, forty-seventh, forty-eighth, and fiftieth wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And Madam President, that concludes my report of the November twenty-ninth meeting. We'll now move on to the second report, which is, uh, Madam President, members of the City Council presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, which held a meeting on December thirteenth of twenty-twenty-two. These reports are grouped for convenience, and the following items were passed by majority of the members present. H one contains document number zero-two-zero-two-two dash three-seven-seven-seven Amendment of Municipal Code Titles two-four-eleven fourteen A, fourteen B, seventeen, and eighteen, and technical corrections to the Journal of Proceedings of April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one for ordinance number zero-two-zero-two-one dash eleven ninety-three and the September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two ordinance S, uh, zero-two-zero-two-two dash two-oh-eight regarding Chicago construction codes. I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
H one contains document number zero-two-zero-two-two dash three-seven-two-nine the Amendment of Ordinance zero-two-zero-two-two dash eighteen sixty-nine the zoning reclassification of map number fourteen dash H at nineteen twenty through nineteen twenty-four West Fifty-Ninth Street. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
This one, um, is the casino one, just in case people aren't paying attention to this one. Page two contains document number zero-two-zero-two-two dash two-six-two-nine a map amendment in the twenty-seventh ward for the addresses commonly known as six forty-three through seven forty-one West Chicago Avenue, six forty-one through seven thirty-nine North Halsted Street, six thirty-two through seven forty West Erie Street, six twenty-seven through six sixty-one West Erie Street, five oh one through five thirty-one North Displain Street, and five twenty-four through six thirty West Grand. I understand a few of our colleagues would like to say a few words and that there will be a roll call, um, at the end of the discussion.
Those wishing to speak on this, this item? Alderman Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Uh, rise in opposition to this and, uh, just to reiterate my concerns that I raised in zoning yesterday, uh, I, I did mention the fact that, uh, the land swap uh, for the property on which the casino would eventually sit, um, is the subject of a sale leaseback transaction, uh, due to the fact that uh, Bally's is undercapitalized. And it was pointed out after my comments yesterday, the Bally's team responded. Um, it's not a particularly unusual arrangement in the casino world. People in the casino business don't necessarily want to be in the real estate business, and about half of the casinos, uh, in, in the country have a similar arrangement. Uh, so I take the point. But in this particular instance, it isn't just the transaction, but the motivation behind it. Um, this team is scrambling to find the capital needed to see this project through to fruition. They're looking to everything they can possibly do, every trick that's available, whether it's a commonly employed device or an unusual device is going to be necessary for this company, which again had its stock downgraded, uh, recently. Um, at, at a three-point-six-billion-dollar level of debt, several consecutive quarters of negative earnings. Um, the recent quarter, they did have a very slight uh, uptick in positive earnings, but the concerns of Wall Street remain about their viability to see this project through to fruition. So it really raises the prospect for us as a city. What do they bring to the table as our partner in this venture? We know what we bring to the table as a city. Everything. This simply couldn't happen without the city of Chicago authorizing it and being a partner to, in this case, our chosen, uh, selection, Bally's. What do they bring to the table? They don't bring the money that they need to make this happen. They don't bring experience running a casino. The senior partners of this venture had no experience in the casino industry when they acquired Bally's. It was a business venture for them. They weren't running a casino at the time, and they don't have experience in a major construction venture such as this. Alderman Vegas brought up the need for a project manager the other day, for someone who could oversee a large construction project that things can go wrong. Unforeseen, uh, obstacles tend to come out of left field with something like this. We've seen it happen at O'Hare. We've seen it happen with the chain Burn Interchange. Recently, in my ward, the Webster Street Bridge, a relatively modest capital project compared to this one is behind almost a year due to unforeseen problems with supply chain issues, cost overruns, financing. We're hitching our wagon to an unexperienced horse, and that is a problem. That is something that could come back to haunt us in the future if this project does not stay on budget and on schedule. I remain opposed to it for these reasons. I will be voting no today, and I encourage you to join me uh, in a vote of opposition to this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Hopkins. Any other members of the body that wish to speak, Alderman Burnett?
Yes, uh. Thank you very much, Madam President. Uh, just like my colleague Alderman Hopkins, um, who's very articulate. Um, you know, him and I are going into the next four years without an opponent. Uh, neither, neither one of us have a race, so we thank God. I know I thank God for that. I'm sure you do too. Right? So we're very grateful for that. But you know, at the same time, uh, myself, uh, like some of my other colleagues who stepping aside, I had the opportunity to step aside too. I got all my time. I'll be sixty next year. You know, so it's like, you know, I'm here. Um, and I have nothing to lose. Um, but you know, one of the things that I will not do in this body is allow anyone to disrespect me. No matter who they are, how big they think they are, how strong they think they are. Nobody's gonna disrespect me, and I'm not talking about anybody in this body. But I, but I would say, and those that I'm referring to know who I'm, who I'm talking about. Uh, I don't need anything from anybody. Nothing, nothing. I'm here. I don't need anything. I'm here. I don't need nothing. God bless me. And you know, and, and, and we give that all to God. We call that the favor of God. But you know, doing my daily reading, uh, in the Bible. You know, right now I'm in the, in one of the three books of Solomon. And, uh, you know, he talks about how you can grow to be king, and you can do all this stuff, and then young, younger people come, and then they forget all about you, right? And then he goes on to say that everything is meaningness. You know, nothing means anything except your relationship with God. Right? And he goes on and on and on and says that all through ecclesiastics. He says a little bit about it in Proverbs, and I'm just getting ready to get into the songs of the, uh, the, the last book. You know, um. It's a funny thing. I, I, uh, I don't know if you all, you all know I do a ministry with the jails and the prisons. I found myself leaving the jail Sunday, uh, encouraging brothers to come to God. You know, we blessed. We got about eighteen brothers to join church that day. And, um, you know, somebody called me and, and almost set me off and almost made me lose my religion. And, uh, but I gotta pray every day because there's bigger things out here and you know, there's, there's bigger issues to deal with. Um, and this casino is bigger than me, bigger than individuals, you know, bigger than other folks' egos or what they think they are, or who they think they are is bigger than that. This is a big deal. This is something that three administrations been trying to do for a long, three administrations for over thirty years. Over thirty years been trying to do it. This mayor got it done. This mayor got it done. And we think about, you know, it's funny how it's funny how right now, and I'm looking at all of this stuff happening so fast. It's funny how, you know, we started out in twenty nineteen, then, then twenty twenty the pandemic come, and then in, in between that, we like scrambling around, and then now in twenty twenty-two things start getting back on track, and a lot of things start to happen. And, and I think about all these things that's coming, even some of the three things that we dealt with just this week. The CPI, the red line, the casino, and I'm looking at all of these things, and I'm like, man, being here twenty-eight years. I remember when, you know, everybody tripping on some of this stuff. I remember when we all thought it was necessary to vote for the parking meters. And a lot of us did because it was necessary at that time in order to get past that budget, even though it turned out to be a bad idea in, in some instances. I remember that. I remember, you know, in other administrations, we vote for, we voted for, uh, to fix the, the, the water lines. And we put in there that every year, you know, bills will go up in order to fix that. All of us thought that was necessary. We voted on it, and nobody tripped. You know, and I, I, I think about how we did do the red line going to the north side. Nobody tripped. All of this stuff coming to a head right now, you know, and dealing with, dealing with this administration, and everything is like a trip. Right? But I'm gonna say this. A lot is getting done. You know, it's funny. I was at a Christmas party last night in my ward in West Humboldt Park. And, you know, and people were so excited. They were like talking about, you know, you know, it's funny how when you deal with your community organizations sometimes, you know, and you, you acquiesce power to them and everything. And they were talking about how much they getting done with the Invest Southwest. You know what I'm saying? And they were like so excited, and, and they had hope. You know, we talking about areas where development hasn't been done in over fifty years. You know, on the south side and the west side where equity is happening and things are, you know, things are coming to fruition. And, and I was like, wow. And they mentioned the mayor's name, and they started clapping. And I was like, wow, this is a trip, you know, but people are feeling these things. These things are starting to happen in the city, even though we went through all of this stuff. And then I look at this casino, and I look at, you know, how this last budget, that forty million dollars helped us a lot, y'all. You know, I'm gonna tell you, at that same meeting I was at, um, you know, I have a, a little store on a, almost on a, between me and Emma on Chicago Avenue, almost on Pulaski. They telling me they got a thirty-thousand-dollar tax bill. Getting ready to close down. Could you imagine if we didn't get the forty million dollars from the casino upfront? Where would we be right now? What would we have to do right now? What would go on right now if that didn't happen? Could you imagine if we didn't have a CPI in and it didn't balance out what we were gonna be doing in the future in reference to this budget? Could you imagine if with this casino, we gonna get two hundred million dollars a year, man? That's gonna help sustain this city and help us all out in the future. We talking about six thousand jobs coming to the community. We're talking about already, already in my area, people looking about other stuff already. People looking, people looking about other stuff and do other things to capture, to capture the momentum of all the things that's going on. And we talking about an area in my ward where we used to call Ghost Town. Right? Right behind Montgomery Wars building, where myself and, and you know, some of the guys I grew up with used to ride our bikes and chase rabbits and coyotes and, you know, go in and out of the trains, and we talking about an area now that's gonna be so vibrant, so beneficial to the city, bring so many tax dollars to the city that is gonna be incredible. I'm for this casino because I'm for the future of this city. I'm not for it because I'm running, because I need a vote. I'm not for it because I'm trying to get attention. Y'all don't have to put me in the news, put me on TV. It don't matter, right? I'm not doing it for that. I'm doing it because just like with the other things, I thought it was the right thing for the city. This casino is the right thing for the city. It's gonna bring, being a former member of the Choose Chicago Board. Tourism, I'm telling you, getting that out of town money is not a joke. We talking about millions of dollars. At one time, we had over fifty thousand people coming to this city. And one of the main challenges that we have in competing with other cities is is our two challenges, our two competitors, Disney World and Las Vegas. Disney World and Las Vegas. Chicago comes in third. With this casino, we are going to compete. Now, of course, now, of course, of course, we want to make sure that there's equity. We talking about 40% of minorities getting jobs, contracts. I want to make sure people from Cabrini and I got that commitment. People from my neighborhood be able to get jobs, got that commitment. And that's a big deal because it can change the face of that community because of these opportunities. So I'm for this casino because I'm for the city of Chicago. I'm for money going to other communities to help other neighborhoods. And I know that this casino is gonna help. And I want to thank you, Mayor, for what you have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. The chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I stand with a little bit of concerns about this, this project. This is a triple P, public-private partnership where the city of Chicago will be a partner in this endeavor. I'm concerned because I don't think that the administration currently right now has the professional team on board to deliver a project of this size. When we take a look at the 78, when we take a look at Lincoln Yards, these have been projects that have been talked about that are multi-billion dollar projects. We take a look at projects similar to O'Hare where there are PMOs. I would encourage that as we move forward with this public-private partnership, that we have the owner's rep, a owner's rep onboard to ensure that the project's going to be delivered on time and on schedule only because there's revenue tied to this. There's revenue that's tied to this. So we want to make sure that this project's done quickly so that way we can capture that revenue to help our budget. So those are the concerns that I have right now. I would also like to say that as relates to including minority and women, that we should be taking a look at including our vocational schools that we currently have in place, whether it's CVS, Dunbar, Prosser, taking a look at encouraging these contractors to utilize these young men and women, predominantly African-American and Latino, that are going to be graduating with an opportunity to enter into the middle class with a skilled trade. So that's something that we need to ensure with this project moving forward, that number one, we have a PMO that's gonna help deliver this project on time and on budget. And on number two, making sure that we're including these young CPS students that are going to graduate with an opportunity to get a career, a middle-class career in the building trades. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. Honestly thought that when George Cardenas lost or left, speeches would be a little shorter around here. But, and I have nothing but respect for my neighbor and my colleague Alderman Burnett. All kidding aside, and I'll so for the record, I'm not the one who brought up the parking meter deal during this debate. Walter, you did that. But I spoke to this in committee and I'm not going to speak long today like, like some because I think it's pretty well documented how I feel about the project, my, my strong opposition to it. Nearly 90% of the, of my constituents in the 42nd ward are opposed to it. And certainly I've been hearing from them very regularly. But I did want to highlight a few things that I find troubling with not just this project, but really the process. This pro, this process was like nothing we've ever done before. And typically our processes are similar for zoning and plan commission approvals, but this one seemed like it was literally turned on its head. To take you back to the chronology, the administration first appointed their own internal evaluation committee to select five finalists among all the bidders. And then sometime after that, we impaneled our own casino committee chaired by Chairman Tunny. And the purpose for that committee was to vet these three finalists that the mayor's office had selected. And after just two short meetings, that was derailed by finalist being selected by the administration, not by the committee. And I can tell you that many of us had expected the committee process to be where all of the vetting would occur. We would get to compare between the competing proposals and look at their financing, look at their balance sheets and ask them questions, and that didn't occur. And so I'm really disappointed that that part of the process failed. The other thing that's really concerning to me is that our casino committee and this body approved the temporary and permanent casinos before traffic studies and public safety plans had been developed. And you all know, in negotiating zoning in your wards, especially if it's a, a big impactful project, traffic studies and, and safety plans are the things that you expect to have in hand while you're considering the project and use those things as ways to improve the project. That's what I do with every single plan development that I negotiate downtown. I know my colleagues, Alderman Dowell and Hopkins and Burnett do the same. That didn't occur here. We didn't have that, that, that ability. And so it's troubling that, that for the permanent site, that traffic study was not delivered into this body till 11:00 AM on Monday during the plan commission vote to approve this project. So not even the plan commission had the benefit of reviewing a traffic study or a safety plan before they approved this project. I can tell you that, that judging from Wall Street's reaction to these quarterly investor calls that Bally's does with their shareholders, they're very skeptical about this project and its ability to be financed. And that would explain why Bally's went to Oak Street Capital, good Chicago business here, to secure $500 million in funding, 200 million of it through a land sale leaseback and another $300 million in available equity. That's a half a million dollars for a $1.7 billion project. In fact, Bally's during the zoning committee hearing admitted that if Bally's defaults, Oak Street will own this casino. And do we know Oak Street has a lot of proficiency in running them? I know they bankrolled them, but do we know that they're any good at running them? So something to consider. I could go on and on and on about traffic and safety and why we should be very skeptical about this project, but I won't. I would just say, remember this day. And who knows what the Illinois Gaming Board is going to do. But people in this room raise these red flags now, and I hope to God they don't come true because Alderman Burnett is correct. The city is very much depending on this project to be successful. And not just the city, but our pension funds. So we've made a very meaningful, important decision here. Obviously, we can all agree to disagree. But I, I really do hope that the opponents to the casino are somehow wrong. I don't think we are, but I hope so. Because literally, our pension fund's future is depending on it. I'll be voting no.
Chairman Tunny, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, colleagues. I just want to remind our committee that the casino vote has already happened. What we're in front of the zoning is some modifications to the plan development, which obviously took out some parking, but primarily they had to go back to the plan commission because there was somewhat some changes. So the arguments for and against, we've heard this a couple of months ago. And I, I do, as chairman of the committee, I, I want to give a little more of a little chronology on, on this because it was back in December of whatever year it was that there was a presentation by all the committee applicants, the casino applicants at the UIC Pavilion. And it was an all-day event. And I, I was not the, I was not the chairman of the casino committee at the time, but being a hospitality guy and the fact that casinos have been dreamed about for, whether it's a nightmare or a dream for three generations or three, three decades, I should say. But my memory serves me correct, it was Alderman Patrick Thompson and myself that went and listened to all of the presentations, which at that point there were five. And so we had, it, it wasn't really as quickly as one thinks. If one was interested in this subject as I was, you know, I spent a lot of time with this. Procedurally wise, I felt a little disappointed. And I think a majority of my committee members felt that we should have worked harder on the adaptive reuse of McCormick Place One, you know? So that being said, that was not a charge of our committee. And that being said, I think while the casino met, there were briefings, there was a lot of give and take on all of the three proposals that went in front of our committee. And, you know, I would also say to agree with Alderman Riley, I think the mayor probably short circuited her decision before the committee had some point. It was the charge of our committee to say is Bally's up or down at that point, which I think we could have been a little more patient. But that being said, those arguments about the casino are, are under the bridge, so to speak. This actual conversation today is about a series of amendments to the PD and not to rethink where we're at. So with that being said, you know, I am in support of it. I think there's risk and everything. But I think that whether it's Bally's or Oak Street, I mean, this is an industry that we, the city, know nothing about. And God bless, hopefully we don't ever get, have to get that instrumentally involved in the casino business. But it's, I think it's a risk that we have to take as a city, and I am in support of it. And I think I've said my piece on it, and I urge you to, and I vote on the roll call. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman Tunny. Madam Clerk, please open up the electronic voting.
The voting is now open. Please hit refresh and submit.
Alderman Burnett. Alderman Spazato.
Alderman Spazato. Any other members need assistance with voting? Alderman Vasquez?
Alderman King? Alderman King, Rule 14. Alderman Abarka.
I believe that Alderman King, you have to state on a record basis.
Go ahead.
Recuse of.
Oh, go ahead.
Soon as I was recognized. Yeah, I have to recuse myself out of an abundance of caution for Rule 14. My husband's law firm at some point may have represented Bally's. Thank you.
Alderman Abarka. Alderman Abarka is a yes. Alderman Burke. Burke, Alderman Burke is a no. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Coleman is a yes. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis was a, is a yes. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Maldonado is not here. Alderman Austin, not here. Alderman Mitts, not in the chambers. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Osterman is a yes. All voting that has wished to vote, the voting is closed. Alderman Osterman is a yes.
The yeas are 39, the nays are five. Alderman Capelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion for reconsideration fails. Matter passes. Chairman Tunny, back to you.
Continuing on with my report, page one through seven contain various map amendments in the 5th, 13th, 20th, 25th, 26th, 27th, 30th, 32nd, 33rd, 34th, 37th, 42nd, 43rd, and 44th wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
No objection, so ordered.
Page eight contains various large signs over 100 square feet in area 24 feet above grade in the 11th, 28th, and 23rd wards. Move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
No objection, so ordered.
And Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Tunny. Next up, the agreed calendar on Chairman Harris.
Thank you. I've received from the clerk a listing of items, items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory commemorative and memorial resolutions offered by Alderman Hopkins, Hairston Harris, Quinn Burke, Lopez Coleman, O'Shea, Taylor and Gardner, Tabarez, Viegas, Mitts, Nugent, Tunny, and Capelman, Oster and, Osterman, and Hatten. I move passage of the agreed calendar and the omnibus.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. A new business, Mr. Clerk. Please call the wards beginning with the 50th.
Claims, free permits, license, the exemptions which are referred to the Committee on Finance, zoning amendments which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, grants of privilege on and over the public way which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, an exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access to parking facilities which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Silverstein and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 2-102-030 CC regarding establishment of Chicago fatal crash legacy report, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Haddon and others have proposed resolution for submission of a public question by referendum to Chicago voters at next regular election proposing increase in City of Chicago real estate transfer tax for purposes of providing resources for affordable housing and services to combat homelessness, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Almond Osterman has proposed ordinance for the call for placement of a plaque honoring Marion Jean Kennedy Velini at 5708 North Ridge Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Almond Martin has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, sections 4-60-022 and 4-60-023 to allow additional alcoholic liquor and packaged goods licenses on portion of North Lincoln Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almond Gardner has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-023 to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of West Higgins Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almond Gardner also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 4445 West Irving Park Road, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, chapters 1-23 and 2-54 regarding failure to maintain eligibility to do business with city and required disclosure information, which is referred to Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity. Almond Riley also has proposed order for the issuance of a permit for assigned signboard at 115 East Riverwalk South, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Viegas has proposed resolution to call for hearings on requiring, required reporting of technology vendors contracted with city and expansion of diversity and equity within technology, which is referred to Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Almond Viegas also has proposed resolution to call for town hall on possible implementation of municipal sidewalk snow and ice removal pilot program, which is referred to a joint committee comprised of the members of the Committee on Transportation and Public Way and the members of the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Almond Rodriguez Sanchez and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Title V by adding a new chapter 5-25 entitled Chicago Healthy Homes Checkup Pilot Program and chapter 5-26 entitled Rental Housing Unit Registry, which is referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Almond Burnett has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 345 North Morgan Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Secher Lopez and others have proposed resolution to call for public hearings on disciplinary case against Officer Robert Baker, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Almond Secher Lopez and others have proposed resolution to call for subject matter hearings on reinstitution of Office of Tax Protection, which is referred to Committee on Finance. on reinstitution of Office of Tax Protection, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Tabarez has proposed order for the issuance of a permit for assigned signboard at 5230 South Cicero Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Rodriguez and others have proposed ordinance for call for establishment of the 2023 Property Tax Relief Loan Program, which is referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Alderman Brookins has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of South Halsted Street, which is referred to Committee on License to Consumer Protection. Alderman Moore has proposed orders for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 17-13-0103A, regarding application fee for special use applications, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Burke has proposed order for the issuance of a permit for assigned signboard at 5825 South Kedzie Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Lee has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Joe Harris Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Lee also has proposed order for the issuance of a permit for assigned signboard at 810 West 31st Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Salas Giarza has proposed orders for honorary street designation as honorary Amana Kala Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Sawyer has proposed order for amendment of Municipal Code Titles Two and Seven by modifying Section 2-112-110 and adding new Section 7-20-050 regarding Chicago African-American HIV/AIDS Response Fund, which is referred to a joint committee comprised of the members of the Committee on Health and Human Relations and the members of the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Sawyer also has proposed order for, to call for the Committee on Committees and Rules to amend the City Council Rules of Order and Procedure for 2019 through 2023 term to reflect gender neutrality, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Espada and others have proposed, Alderman Espada and others have proposed resolution for amendment of Chairman and Committee on Environment, Protection, and Energy for the 2019-2023 term, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Committees and Rules and the Committee on Environment. The matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Lopez and others have proposed order for prohibition of city departments and employees from maintaining, accessing, or utilizing TikTok application, which is referred to Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Two committees have been called, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development and the Committee on Committees and Rules, and matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Lopez and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings on the status of U non-immigrant status certifications within the city of Chicago, which is referred to a joint committee comprised of the Committee, the members of the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights and the members of the Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Lopez and others also have proposed order to call for transparent certification of U non-immigrant status certifications, which is referred to the joint committee comprised of the members of the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights and the members of the Committee on Public Safety. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of all the medic introductions.
Thank you, sir. Next up, the approval of the Journal, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am not aware of any corrections to the Journal from the November 16, 2022 regular meeting and move that it be approved.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm aware of one piece of unfinished business. It was filed by Alderman Napolitano and calls for a vote on SO 2021-3215, which was deferred and published on November 16, 2022. There was a second Rule 41 notice regarding booting in private lots, but it has been withdrawn.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for the passage of SO 2021-3215, amendment of the Municipal Code, Chapter 8-20, by adding new Section 8-20-2-020 regarding unlawful possession of a firearm, which was deferred and published at the November 16, 2022 City Council Meeting by the first most favorable vote of the Committee on Finance and associated motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Madam President, I just wanted to, I wasn't in a room when the first vote for appointment of our 12th ward, Alderman, I would like to be recorded, yes, if I could.
Yes.
That's been the rules.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez. On Alderman Curtis?
No, no.
It's already passed, sir. Yes.
I'd like to object to that. So there's an objection being raised, therefore then I think that debate and a roll call would be approved.
Well, sir, first of all, your objection is untimely. As I looked across the room when Alderman Napolitano made his motion, there were no objections made. I said, hearing no objections, so ordered. The matter is passed. So you can note your objection for the, you can note your, sir, you can note your objection for the record, but the matter is passed.
Well, then I'd like to reconsider. Motion to reconsider.
Motion for reconsideration that failed. That was the reference point. So I don't believe that, I don't.
When you're seeking to apply my vote, because I voted yes on the first item of finance, you're seeking to apply my vote, which was an affirmative, to this ordinance, I am now saying that I'd like to reconsider that vote.
Well, but what I'm saying to you, sir, is that when the matter comes before the body for consideration, as you saw throughout the course of the day, when people had objections, they raised their hand and said that they had an objection, and their objection was noted for the, for the, for the record. What people don't do, and it's not timely, is after the matter has already been ruled upon, and we're moving on now, three items later, for you to stand up and say, I want a motion for reconsideration. Your objection is simply not timely.
I think that there has been no motion to reconsider on this specific item, and in this case.
Yeah, 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 no, sir, as you, as you all know, having been here for quite some time. Members, hold on, members can reference the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion for reconsideration, which is exactly what Alderman Napolitano did. And there were no objections, no exceptions whatsoever. So the matter was ruled upon by the Chair. Your objection now is untimely, sir.
Well, I'm not raising an objection. I think that under the Rules of Order Procedure and under Roberts' Rules of Order, when there is an objection being raised, it is a courtesy, and it's also just a democratic thing to say, well, there's an objection being raised now, and we should therefore then have a roll call in the debate.
Sir, if you had an objection, you can raise your objection. You're clearly laying the record for that. But the time to make the objection to the motion is when the motion is made in a timely fashion, not three items later, as you are attempting to do now. Your motion is untimely. We are moving on, sir.
My motion is to, one, have a roll call. Is, if that's being denied, then my motion then is to reconsider.
Your motion is denied.
Well, then I'd like to motion to overrule the Chair, because I think that this is a democratic process. I'm clearly raising objections. It's still timely. The matter just passed. So I think it's still timely. I think the democratic thing to do is to have a debate and a discussion on this item. We've received a letter from 27 organizations, including the ACLU of Illinois. They raise serious concerns around this ordinance and whether or not it actually will create more public safety in the city of Chicago.
And I don't have any doubt about that, sir, but I'm, what I'm, what I'm struggling with is why, when, what I'm struggling with, sir, what I'm struggling with, sir, is knowing that this matter was coming up. Alderman Napolitano stood up, raised the issue. There was ample opportunity for you to make this very point, ask for a roll call vote, and you failed to do that. I don't understand, I don't under, I don't understand why you failed to do that in a timely fashion.
How doing it?
But you're untimely.
Then you should allow the motion to proceed.
You're untimely.
Well, I'm motioning to overrule the Chair, so there should be a roll call on that.
So the, the, the motion that is now before the council by Alderman Ramirez Lopez is to redo a vote that he had plenty of opportunity to weigh in on and call for a roll call vote to reconsider a matter that's already been decided by the body. So that is a matter that is up for your consideration, ladies and gentlemen. I've objected, saying that the, his motion is untimely. So the first process, for the first process.
That is a simple request to my colleagues. If we allow this to proceed, then it means that if you have a similar objection in the future, that you would not be able to register your no vote.
No, no, sir, it does not. What it means is that you must pay attention during the course of the City Council meeting, and when you have an objection, to stand up and make that objection in a timely fashion. That's what your colleagues have been doing throughout the course of this City Council meeting, and every City Council meeting. But when I, hold on, sir, let me finish.
Want to yell, but the point of the matter is this is a democratic body. It's good to have democratic debate.
Yeah, and a democratic body has rules that should be followed, sir. And that means also paying attention when a matter comes up. So you, you have a motion, which we are going to vote on. Your motion is to overrule the Chair, who ruled your objection now untimely. Even though if your issue is that you want to be noted as a no, you've done that, and the record is clear. But by all means, we should have a vote. Ruling of the Chair, that Alderman Ramirez Lopez's objection is untimely. I'm sorry. Should, the, the issue is, shall the ruling of the Chair, that Alderman Ramirez Rosa's objection is untimely, be sustained? Madam Clerk, can you please open it? The Chair recognizes Alderman Nugent.
Point of clarification, Madam President. Could you kindly just tell us again what a yes vote versus a no vote is? Apologies.
A, a yes vote is to overrule the ruling of the Chair, which was. The, the, the motion is to overturn the ruling of the Chair. The motion is, the vote is, shall the ruling of the Chair be upheld? A yes vote is upholding the ruling of the Chair. A no vote is to object to, overturn the ruling of the Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the clarification.
Thank you. Thanks for the, the question of clarification. So yes is to uphold the ruling of the Chair, no is to overrule the ruling of the Chair. Give us a moment while we deal with the technical issues here.
Okay. Is it open? Okay, everyone, voting is now open. Please hit refresh. If you are having difficulty, please raise your hand. Here's it, I appreciate it. Appreciate you. Begin always. Alderman Abarkah? Would you like to give a voice vote? Hey, can you please mark Alderman Abarkah as yes? Alderman Burke? Would you like to give a voice vote?
Yes.
Alderman Burke is a yes? Alderman Lopez is not in the chambers. Alderman Maldonado is not in the chambers. Alderman Mitts is not in the chambers. And Alderman Riley is not in the chambers. Okay. Um, voting is now closed.
Nays are eleven. The ruling of the Chair is upheld. Alderman Capelman on a motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The nays have it, the motion for reconsideration fails. Alderman Mitchell, back to you.
Madam President.
I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just make this extremely quick. This was written about a year and a half ago. I want to thank you and your administration. We writ, we wrote it originally. It was open for anyone to critique and change it to make it better, more palatable for the city of Chicago. Thank you to you and my colleagues, giving another tool to our Chicago police officers and this, this incredible war on guns that we're facing day in and day out. So thank you very much for your help on this. Thank you to my colleagues as well.
Thank you. Alderman Mitchell.
President, I'm not aware of any further unfinished business.
The Chair recognizes Alderman.
Um, first of all, Merry Christmas to everybody. Alderman Tullia Pharoah and I were having a, a conversation, and we're trying to figure out, both of us have memberships to Bally's that we don't use. And we were trying to figure out, we were trying to figure out if we needed to recuse ourselves on the last vote. So, well, okay, all right. All right, well, Merry Christmas each and every one of you.
We're definitely going now.
Alderman Mitchell, miscellaneous business.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
All right, the date and time of the next meeting?
I've handed up to the clerk an ordinance that said in the date and time of the next meeting.
Mr. Clerk, please read.
Beat ordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago. Section one, the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, January 18, 2023, beginning at 10 o'clock AM in the City Council Chamber on the second floor in City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Ordered, Alderman Mitchell, the omnibus.
Madam President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the most first, most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. And ladies and gentlemen, before we adjourn, let me remind you that I am treating you for a holiday lunch immediately after City Council here. Eat, drink, and be merry. Thank you. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, there being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah. Thank you.